Oh, I'm happy, councilmember.
Takes still a little for some people.
But we're just about to start, so. To grab our cookies and bread.
Two cookies.
And the bird as well.
All right, I call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor's order.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
I'm here.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Elrich. Councilmember Seaman.
President.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
As far as I know, councilmembers Elrich and Barry will be here shortly. Are there any council comments or announcements? Okay.
First comment is that I have a question about the speed bumps and the disabled access around the speed bumps. We had discussed it at an earlier meeting and gotten some advice, and I was under the impression that the Public Works Department thought that it was possible to build the speed bumps and have them be accessible, but it turns out that, given the way that they were going to do it, it might actually make each speed bump cost an additional $1,000. And so, I was talking to the Public Works Director today, who I don't think is in the audience tonight, about what it was they were thinking they were going to do, and they were thinking that they were going to make a ramp to go actually up onto the sidewalk and around the whole length of it. And apparently, the actual depth of one of those speed bumps is 12 feet. And I didn't believe that when she first said it, but going over them today, I realized that in fact they are 12 feet. And so, that would be an additional $1,000 for each one of those speed bumps. And I asked the question about, you know, having the speed bump stop, and to do that, if you had it stopped before the curb, so that there was, you know, three or four feet there, so somebody in electric scooter or wheelchair or even a bicycle could go around it, that would be the 12 feet of space plus four feet on each side to get around it so that there wasn't a lip, which would mean 20 feet of space by each speed bump where you wouldn't be able to park, because you'd have to leave it open all the time for access. You'd have, you'd lose 20 feet of parking in every area than where you also had a speed bump, which isn't a great benefit either. The Public Works Director told me that the county's speed bumps are ADA accessible because the slope, the incline slope is such that it's a gentler slope. And my understanding, my limited understanding of transportation engineering and traffic calming devices is that one of those would be a speed bump you'd go over at about 18, 19 miles an hour, which is why the city has a modified speed bump where it has a gentle slope and then it has a little more of a lip to it, which makes it, I think, as you have said before, Mayor Porter, sort of a hybrid between a bump and a hump, and that that's what the folks here like.
What's the location of it you're concerned about?
Every speed bump we build from here on out.
Okay, because the street with sidewalks, the people on wheelchairs.
It's a non-issue there.
Are.
It's a non-issue. It's only in places where we're putting a speed bump where there isn't some other way to get down the street if you are in an assisted mobility class. So, if there was a sidewalk, there wouldn't be an issue.
So, could we, could we refer this to Public Works for further discussion? Could we do that?
Cool.
Is that what the city manager would recommend in terms of dealing with it?
Well, we're about to build two speed bumps, or maybe three, in Ward Three, and we have, I think, a couple more in the pipeline. So.
I think, I think, if I'm correct, only one of the ones in Ward Three doesn't have sidewalks adjoining it. Is that correct, Bruce?
I'm totally comfortable letting the Public Works Director make it work.
Yeah, I just took Councilmember Clay's comments as being informational and advisory in terms of the concern you've expressed in prior meetings. Certainly, I, we can have Ms. Breakaway come and address the council on this topic if you would like.
Well, I certainly think we need to make them ADA compliant.
Correct.
Well, the last thing I was going to say is that the Public Works Director said that we could actually do a hybrid of our hybrid where we had a slightly shallower spot in the speed bump that would be kind of like the county's. So, you'd have a three-foot path in it that was like the county's, and then it would tilt up to the, to the higher bump. So, and the issue there is the issue that we've talked about before, where people will steer to the lower portion. We would want to avoid having people steer to the center of the road and putting it in the center, and I suggested maybe we could put it off-center so that people could go over it, but it wouldn't force people to steer one wheel to the center of the road if we were going to use that sort of hybrid, hybrid model.
That's reasonable.
That's a lot of information without a drawing. I'm sorry, but I just had the conversation with other staff.
It's a lot of information without a drawing. I don't think we want the wheelchairs driving down the middle of the road, so that didn't, if it works without that, I think we're okay.
But that, that's a good consideration, and I know you've raised that before, and it, it would be useful, and I would be very open to recommendations from the Public Works Directors to how we could accomplish that.
So, the question is, for the ones that are in process right now, how are we going to handle that?
Well, I don't know, Bruce. Do you have a thought? Have you had any discussion with the people on those streets?
No, but my sense is if the Public Works Director can come up with the hybrid, hybrid design that meets our needs, we should go in.
Yeah, what I would suggest is that we just, obviously, it's only a problem in certain circumstances, and that they may have to be tailored depending on the street we're talking about. It's just they have the Public Works Department, as Councilmember Williams is suggesting, you know, make a more specific proposal and talk to the individual neighborhood about that.
Okay. Great. Thanks. All right. Any other comments? Tammy.
A couple of things that residents have been bringing to my attention in Ward One are projects that just have a few remaining details to be worked out, namely, the Carroll Avenue Streetscape and the Metropolitan Branch Trail. And I would appreciate the city manager looking into both of these projects to make sure that they get done in short order. They're both very exciting to the neighbors and just want to make sure that they get completed so that we don't have continuing irritants.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I think I mentioned several weeks ago that Lee Jordan was inducted into the Montgomery County Human Rights Hall of Fame, and I just want to let the community know that we're going to be having a local celebration in Tacoma Park on June 3rd at 2:00 PM at the council chambers, or the auditorium, I think we call that now.
Okay, are you going to send some additional information around so that we can distribute it?
We will, yes. There will be flyers and notices in the newspapers, but I just wanted to let everyone know.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yes, two items. One, I got a listserv message earlier today from some folks in the Hillwood Manor area, and the traffic was mainly about concern over burglary there over the last couple of days, a couple of car break-ins. People see it perhaps as part of a pattern. The police have responded in all of the instances, but still, there seems to be a lot of angst about, A, what's going on, and B, if more patrols might be in order. So, I'd ask that you look into that, maybe with the chief, and see what's happening there. The second item is, I did get a notice from S H A today, and they say that the pedestrian lights on New Hampshire will be activated, at least in one direction, tomorrow, which is worth small celebration, and that one of the, the lights on University Avenue that was reported not working is working again. So, if this is in fact an accurate report, it means that only one light is now not working, and I've been assured that within two weeks, it will be working.
Okay, great. Anything else? I wanted to let everyone know that today I had the privilege of being part of the grand opening of the Crossroads Youth Opportunity Center. This is something that was recommended by the Bi-County Task Force on Gang Violence that I was a member of. This is a center for young people, young people in gangs, but mainly to prevent young people from getting involved in gangs. One of the things that I learned as a member of the task force is that if you wait until people are already gang members, you've lost more than half the battle, that preventing young people, many of whom have difficulties at home or in school, preventing them from getting involved in gangs in the first place is much more efficient and much better for everyone involved than trying to extricate them from a gang once they've gotten involved. And so, the purpose of this Youth Opportunity Center is to assist young people who are in danger of getting involved in gangs or who are at risk. And it's a wonderful facility. It was made possible by federal funding that Congressman Chris Van Hollen obtained. It has been endorsed by the county executives of both Montgomery and Prince George's County, both of whom were there, as well as Congressman Van Hollen. And there was a very moving, a couple of very moving statements, one by a young woman who has been getting assistance from the county and who spoke very movingly of her difficulties in school and her difficulties at home, and how important it had been to find people and programs that she could relate to and that kept her in school and that encouraged her to try and work on her relationship with her parents. Also, a statement by a young man who was a gang member, who talked about how he and another young gang member were on the youth advisory group for this organization that's setting up the, going to be running the center. And he talked about how he had gotten to know this other young man, and now, he said, "It's really weird." He said, "We see each other on the street, and we're supposed to be enemies, but now I like him." So, it does, it has already changed some young people's lives, and I think this is exactly the kind of thing that we need to do. Obviously, there needs to be law enforcement aimed at gang violence, but preventing young people from getting involved is far more efficient and far better for everyone involved, and that's exactly what this center is supposed to do. It's located right in Tacoma Park at the Tacoma-Linley Crossroads, where it is available to the largest population of young people who are new to this country and who are, many of them, at risk. So, I'm very pleased to have it there, and we're going to do some publicity to try and get members of our community aware that it's there so they know where to go if they, if they need to. Do you have anything? Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is the time set aside for comments on items that are not on our special session agenda for this evening. If you have comments on our special session items, we'd ask if you'd hold your comments to that point. This would be appropriate time for comments on the other items on our work session agenda or anything else.
Hello?
Yes.
My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates. The debate with the delegates running for office and Senate people running for office went on great. Terry, Jamie Raskin did a, did a great speech on the death penalty and the ICC and everything else. It went on great. And I, I think everybody should try to get involved in this as part of being citizenship, part of their citizenship. I think they should be not only ready to vote, but get involved in their, in their, choosing their government. Also, also, I wanted to let you know, this weekend, we are going to be having a march from Baltimore to Annapolis to protest the death penalty because Mr. Evans' appeal is coming up on Monday, May 8th. We are going to be marching to, from the death house to the courthouse, and we need as many people as possible. In March, we'll be, we'll be having a rally at 9 o'clock. The march will start at 10 o'clock Saturday morning. And also, I don't know if the council members know this, but something very important came up. Now, on the 2nd of, 2nd of May, Terry Raskin is having his jam, his Jazz With Justice event coming up. We're going to be having a fundraiser for Terry, Jamie Raskin's campaign. And also, I want you to know that it also happens to be a very important day for our city council, too. Terry Seaman is having his birthday. He's turning the big 6-0. Now, everybody, I think, should be, put on some good citizenship, and let's sing "Happy Birthday." Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Terry. Happy birthday to you. Now, let's, let's give him, let's give him a round of applause for what great council member we have, and what for, what for rules. All right.
Thank you.
Great, that's enough. Let's everybody remember Tacoma Park rules.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else?
I'm not going to sing. I'm Kador. I live on 7317 Wildwood Drive. I'm here at Mr. Barry's suggestion. I've been having sort of a battle with the IHOP that's located on New Hampshire Avenue next to the Hampshire Towers for the past two years. The vent, the exhaust fan at the IHOP makes a very loud noise, and our house is positioned just perfectly that the noise hits our house. We can hear it in our house, you know, we have to sleep with the fan on. It's really irritating and annoying, and once you start focusing on it, it sort of drives you over the edge. We contacted IHOP two years ago. The district manager and the managers both acknowledged that it's a problem, and they've been telling us that they're going to fix it for the past two years. We were able to get the Tacoma Park Noise Abatement Officer to go out and measure, and he found it to in fact be a violation, but didn't issue a citation because he didn't have any tickets or, I don't know, it's sort of been a comedy of errors trying to get to this point. My latest understanding is that the, the Noise Abatement Officer in the past maybe four months has gone out and measured at night and has found that it, it may be a violation, but they're looking into whether it's a commercial or residential area, because that affects whether or not it's a violation. But I think there might be some confusion there, because the Tacoma Park Code doesn't have a commercial versus residential distinction.
Doesn't.
That's in the county code. And I guess we're, we just need help. We don't want to move, and we love our house, but it's really disturbing.
It sounds like we need to communicate with the county people. If, if it was a county noise abatement officer who came.
No, it was a Tacoma Park, because the IHOP is located in Tacoma Park.
Right.
It was the.
But then, why, why are we, why is this person then enforcing county law and not ours?
I think it may be some confusion as to what law should be enforced. I'm not sure.
Okay. Maybe the city manager can take a look at that, and we can get that on track.
I will let you know while you're here.
Okay.
The officer did go out, I think it was early in April. The fan was not running at that time, which obviously is the source of your concern. I do expect he will basically be going out this week, basically, you know, directing or requesting that IHOP actually turn the fan on while he is present, so he can do the monitoring while he is on site.
Okay. Unfortunately, whenever you complain, they start turning it off and turning it back on.
Correct.
But it's a 24/7 restaurant, so.
Correct. We're going to basically ask that they can go ahead and turn it on while he's on site, so that hopefully, we can get you a little relief sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd be happy to get in touch with you later this week if you can maybe.
Okay.
Give me your phone number, perhaps Councilmember Barry.
Sure, I'll give you my card.
Okay, thank you, great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
What is it about New Hampshire Avenue that seems to give us such difficulty? Is it the lights, the exhaust fans?
Only the IHOP can help.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Kim Brooks. I was here a couple of weeks ago to talk about the Save Tacoma program, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. The group met on the 24th, discussed outreach in order to express to this council and the council on the DC side about the constituents' support for the program. And as a result, I think several of you will probably be receiving a few letters from organizations and neighborhood groups in the area. But most importantly, in addition to some community neighborhood organizations where we've been meeting on a local level to talk about the program, both how it would run and what's needed to kind of get the resources to actually have it running, we were able to get the attention of Councilmember Fenty's office, as well as Councilmember Mendelson's, and the, they did get a line item of $75,000 for the DC funds to be committed. I think it's been voted on by the Judiciary Committee. It needs to go to the council for a vote, but it's looking pretty good, and looks like their side will kind of come up with their half of things. So, I know you all are working through their budget, but, you know, as you figure out what we can do, I think you should be comfortable about the fact that there's going to be at least half of the pot filled, so to speak. That's about it for now. I think, as I said, you'll just be hearing more from local groups through letters and phone calls and that kind of thing.
Well, thank you for giving us that update. Appreciate it. Yeah, Freina?
My name is Mark Hessel. I understand there was some confusion. I represent a handful of landlords, and I speak with maybe 30 at a time by email and get feedback from a number of them. And tonight, I want to talk about not what's going to happen or what's not going to happen, but a proposal that I think landlords will support in Tacoma Park. As you all know, what the landlords would like to see happen with rent control is that it goes away and never comes back. I seriously doubt, I may be wrong, but I doubt that there are enough votes on the council to do that. One of the alternatives that some people have been talking about is a form of vacancy decontrol, which I think maybe we can get enough support for. But vacancy decontrol comes in a number of forms. I'd also say that even though tonight's agenda is supposed to be about capital improvements, until you address the bigger issues, you don't know what role capital improvements play in the overall scheme that you're going to be adopting this year. So, I think this really perhaps ought to be the focal point of the first debate. Vacancy decontrol can come in a number of forms, and I know one of the objectives here is to maintain as much affordable housing as possible. If you have vacancy decontrol that just says when somebody moves out, prices go to market, no other regulation, well, then, you're going to lose a lot of units. You'd of course also lose a lot if you just kept all the controls in place and places when condo. But there are other variations on vacancy decontrol that you can consider. One of the ones that people are kicking around is go to market when somebody moves out, but then that tenant is protected from any harsh, particularly harsh increases by keeping their annual increases capped. So, if a tenant in building, in unit A moves out, and a new tenant moves in, and they're paying a market rate, the next year, their rent can only go up by the CPI or whatever standard you pick. Another alternative is to say, well, when somebody moves out, the landlord can get as much as they can for the unit, but no more than some standard. And it might be the H O C standard for what they'll pay for Section 8. It might be a blend of Montgomery and Prince George's County public housing authority rates, or some other standard from HUD. I mean, picking it is probably a, a good assignment for staff, but if you pick even the 50th percentile, you would be guaranteeing that rental units in Tacoma Park were less expensive than at least half of the other units out there, which by definition, I think, makes it affordable housing. And if you go to vacancy decontrol, that's not, shouldn't be the end of the story. The pilot program is great. I mean, it ties up housing as affordable at a modest cost to the city for years to come, and I wholeheartedly endorse that. For the units that are still subject to rent stabilization, if that's part of the vacancy decontrol or some other scheme, you do have to look at the surcharge proposals, what a capital improvement petition is going to look like, what it's going to cover, what improvements a landlord is allowed to submit and be reimbursed for. If you've got some of the units in a building being at or closer to market and some of them still controlled, you're going to have to think about how that affects what you allow for a capital improvement petition. It's really, I think, premature to try to make decisions about capital improvements until you know how it fits into the larger scheme.
Could you wrap up?
Having the sense that I'm running out of time.
Yes.
If you allow a form of vacancy decontrol, essentially, you're getting a subsidy from the decontrolled units to fix up and provide better housing for the people that are still subject to the control without putting anybody out. And one last comment, you heard testimony in March from a couple of tenants who are being displaced by condo conversion. And I think one of them at least had a junior in high school. It's very harsh on a family to be in that situation, but you're going to have a lot more of that if you don't allow some flexibility like vacancy decontrol. Thank you.
Thank you. Freina?
My name is Sabrina Barrett. I want to speak in two voices to two different issues, if I may. As a resident of Ethan Allen, I want to renew my plea for help with the pothole situation. It hasn't gone away since last fall, last winter, and low and behold, a new gully has opened up in front of the co-op that is very, very nasty. So, I hope that's on your radar screen still and that we will be able to get some relief from potholes and gullies and trenches on, on Ethan Allen.
On that one, if I could just note that Public Works Director contacted State Highway today.
Good. Great. I would like to also speak in my role as President of Historic Tacoma, a local preservation organization, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind the council and invite the council to come out and join us on Sunday, May the 7th, for the 33rd Annual House and Garden Tour. You will be able to read in the Gazette on Wednesday. It's going to be in the Willow Avenue corridor, and the theme this year is "The Art of Living", and that's a very elastic term. What gets turned into an art form in Tacoma Park? You just never know what that's going to be. So, please come out and enjoy the 14 properties that we have on the tour this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Reno Aldrigetti, 7213 Central Avenue. I came tonight to, once again, speak about the hospital and the college and to ask the council whether you have sent a letter to the hospital regarding the situation with the, or to Adventist Health Services regarding the situation with the, with the college and their intention in terms of that institution and its remaining in Tacoma Park.
You didn't send a letter to the hospital regarding the college?
Yeah, well, no, a letter to Adventist Health Services. If you recall, what I, what I described the last time I was here was the interlocks between the board and the possibilities that may exist in terms of following an evaluation of the land of the hospital at $80 million, of the college at $80 million that opposed to, as opposed to the land of the hospital at $20 million, the possibilities that the interlocks between the boards might move the college towards a, a redefinition as medical, a medical college, which would put them under Adventist Health Services. And the possibility does exist because of the linkages between those, those boards. Since that time, I mean, I don't know what else to do besides having a letter drafted and passing it on to one of the council members and encouraging you guys to get into this rather than to be silent on this issue. Now, in the, in the Gazette, there was an article, it was a well-done article, that said "College to Stay." And it was, it was a good headline. It was a well-written article. It was, it also said that the, that the college is looking at its options. And it's the quote which led to the headline was from the president of the college. And, you know, to me, the, the president of an institution, I mean, I know that, that if I spoke for my board and my board spoke differently, or if the city administrator spoke for you and you spoke differently, that's not a lock. What that is, is, is a paid staff person who is presenting an opinion, and that opinion can be solid or not. I understand that, that the hospital has, has committed a great deal of money to this city for the, for the, for City Hall, but I would say to you, I would say to you that in the same way that this, this council ought to have been involved in public negotiations, highly public negotiations with that hospital, you ought to, at this point, begin to, to enter into discussions publicly to under, with the board members of both the college and Adventist Health Services to understand what is possible and what is not. Could be I'm blowing smoke. Could be all of this stuff is wrong, but you know what? If it's not, it's going to be a great loss to this city. And it seems to me that of all the issues that you have, you know, you've lost the hospital, and we've lost, I mean, again, what is a city if not police services, health care, and name one or two other services? We're losing the health care, and here goes the, goes the only four-year college in Montgomery County, possibly. You don't know one way or the other, and I would suggest to you that it would be a good thing, and it would not be harmful to you, and the letter that was written is not an offensive letter, but it should be shared with the council, and the council ought to be, be putting that, putting that out. What do you say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, first, I've talked to some of the board members in the hospital, because I've been trying to, with the overall board, trying to get at what you're trying to get at, which is what is the real intention. And you're right to the, to the extent that the college president does not want to move, but it is not the college president's decision.
Amen.
It's ultimately the decision of another body. And it's not, and the only people looking at the future of the college is not simply the college itself, but the larger body which makes decisions about Adventist property and Adventist programs. So I know that that's out there. And I also asked about the appraisal, because I had heard the number on the appraisal. It turns out that the hospital, I mean, the college didn't ask for that appraisal, but somebody went ahead and did an appraisal. And I think you can draw what conclusions you want out of that. But it wasn't, the college wasn't looking to find out the value of the land they were on. And so that, that came from someplace else.
My, my suggestion to you, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but my suggestion to you is, is it's great for you and I to talk. It's great for this to be talked about. But until it's in writing, until it is a letter with a response that is on the public record, it ain't nothing.
I don't, I don't think, well, the hospital, in the entity, I always get confused with what they call this, because there are two different entities, in the hospital and the college. And there's a third entity which is over all of them. They are having, their meeting, which was scheduled for the end of May, has been postponed to November. And these issues, all of these issues may come up, will come up, in the, in the November meeting. But it's off the table for the May meeting. And that was the decision they made to put it off. So I agree that this is a time for us to at least weigh in and say, you know, how we feel about whether the college should at least stay here and what their future is. I also don't necessarily agree that, that the hospital going is a closed case. And they, they will have a very difficult road to hoe in convincing people in Montgomery County that to move to where they want to move is actually in the best interest of healthcare for Montgomery County. And the county executive has suggested forming a committee to look at the healthcare future and the implications of this for Montgomery County. And I believe the hospital's going to wind up having to look again at other options for meeting their healthcare needs, short of moving the way they, within the vision of moving. So I'm not ready to give up on the hospital leaving, and I'm certainly not prepared to accept the idea of the college leaving.
I think certainly if the, if the college were not moving, that kind of money being available to assist with a move would be an important factor.
I raised the issue. I said that if you, that if they were to become a medical college at another location, it would be a small matter of building one more office tower and calling it the medical college. And then they'd be free to sell everything. So that's a very legitimate concern.
I, I don't, I certainly don't think there's a problem with us writing a letter encouraging the college to stay. My-
I would suggest it's really about raising questions and, and getting, getting the record set. I mean, certainly, I would agree with you, Kathy, it's about getting them to stay. But it's really about more than expressing opinion. It's about raising, raising questions and having them answered in an institutional way.
Okay. But, but the second half of that was going to be, I don't want to do it in such a way that we actually encourage them to leave. So, but I certainly think-
Nor does anyone. Nor does anyone here at this mic or, or anywhere else, I would think. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor Porter, if I might add, you know, I, I very much appreciate that you have taken it upon yourself to draft a letter. I would love to see that and would love to work with you.
Mark can give it to you.
What, what I can say that the, the council has done in public session is we've initiated a human services committee. And now that the county is looking at doing that, I think we can appoint people who will track that, that process very closely. I also took it upon myself to write a letter to the editor that Larry Rubin signed on to with me. And I, through conversations with board members of both the hospital and the college, and feel very confident that we have an opportunity to certainly keep the hospital closer to where they are, if not keep them where they are. And I, it's incumbent on this council. And I hope that the mayor will put this on the agenda for us to be very proactive in seeking out their cooperation and letting them know that the, the city needs them and wants them to stay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Aldrigetti, I'll also mention that I'm working with a group of like-minded residents who are concerned about healthcare and, and the impact of the hospitals' plans or non-plans. And, and we're struggling with some of these questions about how to, how to approach these issues. I'd like to contact you later and maybe get some more ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
My name is Chris Murray. I'm a commercial real estate broker with a firm called Marcus and Milachap. I specialize in the sale of multifamily properties. We're coming in as apartment buildings in lower Montgomery County, which includes Tacoma Park. I've come here to speak this evening just to shed some sheer economic data on the issue of rent stabilization and the council's ongoing discussions and considerations regarding the issue. I've conducted a market survey of rents in other areas, dense areas like Tacoma Park in the county, as well as in PG County, and just wanted to lay out some figures for you so you can see the disparities that exist. Gaithersburg, Montgomery Village area, and I've used one and two-bedroom figures since those are the most common. Gaithersburg, Montgomery Village, the one-bedrooms range from 780 to 1135 for one-bedrooms, 900 to 1335 for twos. Keep in mind, all of this data covers mainly Class C properties, which are representative of Tacoma Park, buildings built between the 1940s and 1960s. Rockville ranges from 895 to 1325 for one-bedrooms, 965 to 1485 for twos. Bethesda Chevy Chase, and believe it or not, there are some Class C properties there, mainly along the Battery Lane corridor, 1,000 to 1325 for one-bedrooms, 1,200 to 1550 for twos. Upper Silver Spring and the Whedon area, the ranges are from 825 to 1,100, 950 to 1425 for twos. Lower Silver Spring, 850 to 1105 for one-bedrooms, 1,025 to 1325 for twos. City of Tacoma Park, 575 to 740 for one-bedrooms, $700 to 950 for two-bedrooms. And in comparisons, I'm still gathering further data on nearby areas in Prince George's County, such as Hyattsville and College Park. I do have figures from Mount Rainier. In Mount Rainier, you have 675 to 875 for ones and 765 to 1,030 for two-bedrooms. So the rents in the city of Tacoma Park are equal to roughly about 66% of surrounding areas, including in PG County, which we all know Montgomery County is considered a more desirable address in PG, in the minds of most people. At these rent figures, taking into consideration the, especially the recent utility costs, and we know they've been between 30 to 80% for all utilities, a landlord with a common mortgage will have a zero to negative return. Some options for landlords, in, in this case, would be to sell their property. And I know discussions have come up in the past about condo conversions and tenants being displaced. I wanted to give you some, shed some insight as to the economics involved into selling your building as a sheer apartment building versus a condominium conversion. Obviously, a condominium conversion, you're looking at upgrading the units, the buildings, selling out at a certain per-square-foot price figure. Whereas on an income approach, when you have rent control in an area, your value of your building is significantly lower than those end-market rate areas. In the last two years, common sales of apartment buildings based on an income approach in the city have ranged, on average, between $62,000 to $80,000 per apartment unit. This can take into consideration a blend of all units, whether they're ones, twos, et cetera. Conversely, on condominium conversions, depending on the, the physical conditions of the buildings, you're looking at an average sellout price of 85 to $120,000 per unit. The numbers are simple. If you're an owner looking at those figures, you're going to try and get the most money you can out of selling because you can no longer operate as an apartment building since you're losing money. Therefore, you're going to have a slew of condominium conversions, which would obviously generate a loss of rental units. So that's one of the scenarios you're going to see increasing in Tacoma Park if rent stabilization is not addressed. Either condominium conversions, voluntary closures, or foreclosures by the banks. Because at the end of the day, a dollar made is a dollar put in the bank. But if you can't make anything, the bank's going to be knocking on your door.
Can you wind it up?
Thank you for giving me that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Teresa Delasanta. We own properties at 8204 and 8206 Houston Court. Again, I would ask the council to consider a system for decreasing rent stabilization, rent control to accommodate the landlords to at least break even. The costs are overbearing, the increasing utility costs and the cost of improving the properties. Our properties were built in 1953. We've had to upgrade the electrical systems in many different ways to accommodate the code. And none of that, none of those expenses were able to be recaptured by the current rent controls that we have, and they're not under the capital improvement program. So you've put us in a bind where something, we are in a negative stance right now. We are losing money every month in order to pay these bills, and we have increasing ones. And we, as, we are real landlords. We purchased our property in '82 for the first property and '84 for the second one. So we pre-existed rent control. And we are seriously looking at our options right now of what we're going to do because we're running at a loss every month. And I would thank you if you would consider that over the capital improvement modifications, that it's really important to find a way that, we don't want to rob our tenants, but we want to have a business that's viable. And you've, that's all I can say.
Did, did you make a capital improvement petition for the upgrade on the electrical and the other things that you did?
No. My understanding is it's only if you can, if you're replacing an existing system. We had to, we had to redo the wiring to accommodate air conditioning installation and to replace fuses with electrical boxes.
I think that's covered.
There were a lot of people who got many.
Pardon?
There were a lot of people who got many.
I believe that there were capital improvement petitions that, that did up, did deal with upgraded electrical.
Okay. And what's going to happen as far as the increasing utility cost?
Well, that's, that's something that the council has committed to talk about, is the increasing utility cost. Yeah. I understand that that is a problem.
And the increasing insurance cost. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're running a bit behind schedule at this point. And I know that Tom Perez is here to give us our briefing. So I wonder if we could take him a little bit out of order. Do you mind? Tom, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll go, we'll go back to the... We're very pleased to have you here.
Always a pleasure to be here. I was in Kensington last Monday night. So it's good to make the rounds. Good to see all of you. I try to do this every so often, just to give you a sense of where we're at. I've had a number of, obviously, conversations individually with you about issues affecting our communities. And wanted to give you a brief update and then turn it to you for any questions, comments that you might have. As you know, we're in the middle of our budget cycle. We have, the good news is that our budget cycle this year, I think we're in better shape than we were three years ago, which was our worst year since the early 90s. So the economy has turned around locally and tax receipts are improving. The challenge continues to be, though, that we certainly have demands on our money that continue to exceed our capacity. We had a problem with the geographic cost of education index, which is money we're supposed to get from the state to account for the fact that we, it costs a lot more money to educate our kids here. That was part of the Thornton formula. It's never been implemented, and it's cost us, in the aggregate over a number of years, probably roughly $50 million. This year, the whole is, I believe, 17 to 19 million dollars. That's money that we accounted on, didn't get. The other challenge is there was a wonderful bill passed in Annapolis that the governor has or will sign relating to improving the quality of our teacher pension. That has a fiscal impact at a local level. And we're currently debating whether the impact is for FY07 or FY08. That is anywhere between a 10 to 13 million dollar local impact. I'm quite confident that the council will unanimously fund that because it's critically important to keep faith with our teachers, who are the lifeblood of our county. I bring this up to point out that while we have a lot of good news, the economy is indeed turning around. Every cycle has its share of surprises, some pleasant, some more challenging. And those two add up in the $30 million range. And so we have a fair number of challenges that will make it a little more difficult to meet some of the demands. We have about $17 million in requests from nonprofits for funding for their various programs. A very, very small fraction of those are probably not worthy. Ninety-eight percent of them are very righteous programs. I, I bring this all up because it's important to understand the context of the budget cycle. The reality is that regardless of what your project is in which someone is requesting additional county dollars, you're basically competing against everything that's demanding county dollars. So, for instance, hypothetically, if you were asking for more money for, say, a gym, you would be, in effect, competing against demands for after-school programs, demands for art facilities, et cetera. And so I, I point that out to everybody so that everybody has a sense of the context of what's going on. And last year, we had roughly $15 million worth of requests from nonprofits for our, our council grants, and we had about $4 million in the budget. So statistically, this year is roughly similar, where we're going to end up, if you add up the arts and humanities grants, other miscellaneous grants, other nonprofit grants, it's probably in the vicinity of about $23 million. I'm guessing at the end of the day, there will be about seven or eight million dollars worth of money there. So I point that out to everybody because it is an election year, and there is a tendency that some may have to want to promise everything to everyone. And I have attempted to be consistent throughout my four years, which is to say, I will certainly be fighting hard and advocating hard. But I also believe it's important to give a dose of reality to people when they come in and, and not, when I go to the doctor, I want the doctor to tell me how I'm doing and what the options are. I don't want him or her to tell me everything's going to be fine when everything might not be fine. And that's the reality of our situation here. A lot of requests, a lot of righteous projects, including but not limited to the city's request for additional money for the gym. It will be competing with a host of others. In the spirit of the gym, I think I've mentioned to a couple of you that in early April, I sent a letter to the superintendent requesting whether or not the school system could be of assistance in the effort to build the gym. In particular, and I have copies of the letter here with me if you want that, I asked the superintendent to look at the issue of whether we can piggyback on their procurement in the same way that COG has a number of provisions that allow us to buy widgets cheaper if we buy them in the aggregate. Fairfax may have the best procurement for buying widgets, so let's not pay more for widgets than we have to. Clearly, the most prolific purchaser of new gyms is the Montgomery County Public Schools. So it seemed logical to me that we ought to ask them whether we could get into their procurement process. And if they're going to build X number of gyms in the coming year, why don't we ask them to build X plus one and see whether there is potential savings from the economies of scale that come with that. I spoke with the school system as recently as today. They're very interested. Obviously, the ball is in your court. I don't mean to intrude on your process. But what I did attempt to do is at least facilitate a dialogue that could, and ultimately, whenever- a dialogue that could, and ultimately, whenever you decide what you want to do and what fits within both the intent and the fiscal constraints, whatever they may be, I, I think it may behoove you to have that conversation in earnest with the school system and figure out, can we save a couple hundred thousand dollars by using their procurement process? Because I think the administrative costs associated that, my instincts are, would be far outweighed by the, the overall savings from having a much bigger procurement. So they're very willing to engage that dialogue. I encourage you to contact Richard Hawes, who handles facilities. Dick Hawes is someone I have found to be very accessible in, in the many conversations I've had with him. So I'd encourage you to do that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the situation with the, the ladder truck because that's something that I've spent a lot of time on, and I, I want to thank the mayor and council member Williams for their attention. They have been in and around the council and the executive office building with great regularity on this issue. As, as you know, the situation, I, I don't know precisely when construction will begin. I expect it will begin this fall. I hope it will begin this fall, although I think we've all learned not to put too much money on when the ground is actually broken on the project. But there are issues that Chief Carr is dealing with in terms of deployment of ladder trucks. We do not have enough ladder trucks in this county. That is, that is the reality. We need more ladder trucks. It's frankly one of those examples of poor growth management. You know, as you grow as a county, whether it's downtown Silver Spring or Germantown or Clarksburg or wherever you grow, you have to anticipate the infrastructure needs of your growth. We haven't purchased enough fire apparatus, so that's the reality of where we're at. And that's a failing of county's planning policy, plain and simple in my judgment. Chief Carr has to play the hand he's dealt, and so he's attempting to do what he believes is the most effective deployment of the resources that he has. The county is about to undertake the most, the largest procurement of fire apparatus in the county's history, and one of the largest of any fire department in, in the United States. Something like eighty-one pieces of apparatus are going to be ordered this fall. But the reality of the situation here is, the question presented is, what do you do with the ladder truck that is here in downtown Tacoma Park? And Chief Carr's initial decision, initial thinking on the matter was to redeploy the ladder truck to downtown Silver Spring. They have a new station opening probably in June, and you look at the number of high rises that are in downtown Silver Spring versus the number of high rises here in Tacoma Park, and, and there are more high rises in Silver Spring than there are in Tacoma Park. I attempted to make the argument that we are in a situation here in the Down County where we need coverage everywhere because we have the highest concentration of high rises, including but not limited to the highest concentration of high rises that are unsprinkled. So that adds a number, another layer of, of challenge. And so when we first were having this discussion, I think the terms of engagement, or at least the initial thinking, was that the ladder truck would be moved perhaps permanently from downtown Tacoma Park to downtown Silver Spring. That, in my mind, and certainly in Mayor Porter and council member Williams' mind, was not an acceptable resolution. And so we spent some time brainstorming about what is, what are the win-win situations? How can we address this need as we move forward? And what I learned as a result of my due diligence was that the Silver Spring Volunteer Fire Department is going to be purchasing a ladder truck when their facility opens. They actually own both the land and the building in downtown Silver Spring. The, the company, the, the Volunteer Fire Department actually owns both the land and the building. They intend to sell that, and they intend to use a portion of the proceeds to purchase a new ladder truck. I spoke to the chief there as recently as today. And the proposal that, in consultation with Chief Carr and others that we had put on the table, was for the county to forward fund the purchase of that ladder truck so that they can become part of the procurement that is taking place, actually, July first, once our budget is in place. You can obviously realize some economies of scale when you're part of a seventy or whatever the precise number is purchase. And obviously, if you buy it immediately, you will get delivery much sooner. And if you take delivery sooner, then what we discussed was, once you take delivery of that ladder truck, then the other ladder truck would be returned to our neck of the woods, which is critically important because if you have any fire that requires deployment where you get, the, the first ladder truck on the scene arrives, determines that it's an actual fire, under current protocol, you're supposed to have three ladder trucks responding to the situation. That's, that's their current standard protocol. And so it really does make sense on a number of levels, including but not limited to maximizing the coverage here along Maple Avenue and at the Victory Towers and elsewhere in Tacoma Park, to have two ladder trucks within relatively close proximity. So I am cautiously optimistic, and we continue to work through this, but I wanted to bring this to your attention because it's an important issue for the community, it affects us all, that I think we've made progress from our initial set of conversations, which was the potentially permanent loss of the ladder truck for Tacoma Park, to a situation where we could end up losing the ladder truck for a period of roughly a year. Because if we order it this September, October, we should be able to take delivery, I'm told, within nine months, and then you have to fit it, which takes, you know, a couple months. And, and the question presented, which I raised with Chief Carr, is how can we memorialize this, assuming we can work it all out? Because in the spirit of Ronald Reagan, you do want to trust, but you also want to verify. And we do have some transition occurring here in county government, and so we want to make sure. I, I frankly fully expect that regardless of who the county executive is, next year, Chief Carr will remain Chief Carr. He is one of the nation's best fire chiefs and a person that uniformly enjoys remarkable respect. So he's going to be around, and I have found him to be a man of his word. And so it's still, it's still very useful, though, to make sure we try to memorialize that. That's the situation. I wanted to present that to you because I think that's an important situation right now for the community, and I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. Looking at other things here, again, I, I talked about the gym and where we are there. I, I don't want to make promises that I can't keep, other than, you know, we're going to continue to see what we can do best to obtain those resources. And separate and apart from the request for the three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, I think clearly there's some savings to be had in talking to the school system, so I would highly recommend that. I think, I've, I've had conversations with county executive's office regarding the Washington Adventist situation. They intend to do a survey. The RFP is going to be out in the next few days or a few weeks, I should say, to look at the impact of any potential move of Washington Adventist Hospital. The, any move, if it occurs and, and it went north of the Beltway, that area there would require zoning text amendment to facilitate that move. And so as part of this process, certainly the county is going to want to take a look at the health needs. There are certainly a number of concerns that we have in our neck of the woods, and we want to make sure that, we, we want to understand. I believe that, I believe information is power. And so I think the information we're going to get from this study is going to be very useful in what we're doing. And finally, I want to thank Doug Barry for his work on the New Hampshire corridor. We've had a number of conversations. I think there's a tour this Friday morning, and we, it's, everything along the border seems to take far longer than we'd like it to take. But I hope that we can come up with a, a vision that everybody can embrace, and it's something I think we really have to involve both counties in to make it successful. And as you've learned far more than I, anytime you put that into the equation, you, you create some challenges. The transit center at Tacoma Land and Crossroads has run into a couple challenges there with the owner of the Taco Bell, as you know, has raised some concerns. So they, I always thought that they were on a rather unrealistic timeline of trying to break ground this fall. I didn't want to be the skunk in the parade. I was hoping they could do that because that's a critical project for all of us. I don't think that's going to happen on that timeline, given the conversations that are occurring. The good news is, I think it is a when question, it's not an if question. And I want to thank Doug for his leadership in, in pushing that project. I think I'll stop there and turn it to everyone for comments, questions.
I'll recognize a couple council members, but I just wanted to add, in the conversations that you and I and Bruce had about the fire truck, I think one of the things that I thought was so positive about the arrangement that you presented was that it really would be an acknowledgement by the county that there did need to be a ladder truck, both in Tacoma Park and in Silver Spring. And we've been sort of going through a process where every few years, there's a discussion of, we take the ladder truck out of Tacoma Park.
Right.
And if there is an acknowledgement that, yes, there does need to be that kind of equipment in both fire stations, then I think we are ahead of the game for the future. And that's, I think, one of the positive aspects, as if, as you mentioned, we could have it in writing, so it would have some permanency beyond...
Right. As many of you know, we, there was once a, a ladder truck in downtown Silver Spring, and there was thinking that, well, Silver Spring would never spring up again, and so that it wasn't necessary, and we were wrong. Or those who predicted that were wrong, and now there's clearly the demand for both and the acknowledgement of the need for both. So I do think this is a solution that can, while it does present some short-term issues for the next year, and we discussed, okay, how can, are you comfortable, Chief Carr, in your professional judgment, that you have coverage that is within the parameters of acceptable practice within the Fire and Rescue Service, both locally and nationally? And his answer was unequivocally yes. I, I have a far better comfort level when we have two, one in downtown and one here. So I think that's ultimately where we can get it.
Okay. Bruce and then Mark.
Yeah, if I, if I can just reinforce that point, that you may have a very high opinion of Chief Carr, but I know that in our, in the history of the city and the Tacoma Park fire station issues, that it's always gone beyond individual people, and there have been changes over time that have resulted in issues reemerging over and over again that I think really speaks to memorializing it, as you say, in writing.
Absolutely.
Because I can, I can foresee something coming up in the future where there's one in each place, and there's still shortages, and everybody says, well, it's obvious that the place for it is downtown Silver Spring, and they bought their own piece of equipment, so we can't move that one. So if there's anything that's going to move, it's going to be Tacoma Park. And, you know, maybe we've bought into something for a, for a period of time that gains us something, but we want to make sure that it gains in the long run and that somebody five years from now doesn't change it.
Right. Well, we are violating the, one of those basic legal principles, that possession is nine-tenths of ownership.
And, and we don't want to give that up without assurances.
And so I, I fully recognize that our vulnerability lies in the violation of that basic principle. And so we really need to be mindful of the need to try and nail this down. This is a bit of a whack-a-mole or Groundhog Day. Kensington twenty-one on Beers Mill Road, I've dealt with that twice in my short tenure, the efforts to close that station altogether, which I just don't get when you have, you know, Wheaton revitalization and Silver Spring revitalization, and it's, it's remarkable that we talk about closing fire stations when we, you know, should be talking about the expansion of, of fire stations in our neck of the woods. So our history suggests that Groundhog Day may reemerge. We hope it won't.
And, and it's the same history that the county has experienced with closing schools and then going, oh, we've got to build schools.
Right.
And selling off that property and turning it into something else. And can you, I, I didn't quite get the sense of whether, how much success you've had or Chief Carr had had in putting the, the purchase of the ladder truck for Silver Spring into that current...
We're still working on that. I, I do remain cautiously optimistic. I spoke with my colleagues. Everybody's on board with that construct. In next year's budget, the thing we have to make sure is included there is resources to staff it, and we want to include, love to have that truck, you know, nice truck. Who's driving it? And so we've got to make sure we do that. But I, I continue to work through that, and I have not heard any problems. It just makes all the sense in the world when you've got a procurement of this size to take advantage of it now and get a better price.
So I just, I just want to, I'm cautiously optimistic that this will lead to something that this community can live with, but I do want to be able to assure all of the residents that their, their safety is being looked at.
Sure. Oh, me too. Absolutely. I, I have a very personal interest in this. I, you know, I, especially where I live, that is one of the, you know, most challenged areas when it comes to response. I'll never forget the day that we lost our neighbors down at the corner of Flower and Garland because they said they were, we thought it was you, we thought it was you, and, and, you know, it had tragic consequences, so...
And, and if I can just add, I, it was interesting to hear in the conversations that we had with you and Chief Carr about the, the disparity between the service provided for Montgomery County for Prince George's County for fire and rescue and the reverse coming back the other way, and his need to try and work with Prince George's County to come up with a little bit better formula for dealing with that. And I guess I'd like to reemphasize that we, we have experience with that, and we'd like to try and help with that as long as we're getting what we need.
Right. And there are a number of examples there, you know, cross-border cooperation. We want to be cooperative across borders, especially when it comes to public safety, but we also want to try and work out situations that are fair and equitable to both sides, whether it's fire and rescue, whether it's day laborers, provision of healthcare at, at clinics that may be located on one side or the other of the line, so...
Thanks.
Yeah. I want to thank you for the work you've done on this fire station issue because it's really, it's really critical. And I think that between, between the three of you talking about this, you understand the critical element of guaranteeing that we get a guarantee and we get the truck back.
Right.
And I think you hit the nail on the head when you talk about mismanagement. This is, this is a way of pretending for the last eight or ten years that growth doesn't have any cost, whether it's portable in our classroom, schools, or cars that doesn't get bought. It's a way of not spending money on things you need to accommodate growth.
I'll note parenthetically, the Bethesda is actually losing ladder truck that's going up to Clarksburg.
Yeah.
They're not getting it back.
I mean, we, we weren't the only ones hit. And I also understand what you said about, about the pressure you're on in terms of all the special projects like the gym that you're being asked for, because I tried to lobby your colleagues, and while you can get sympathetic here, I also usually get a list of projects that people in their districts are asking for. And I can do the math like you do the math, and it's more money than you guys have in the country.
By a factor of three. I, I have done the math, and, and I, I'm always a little bit of two minds because there, I, I have observed two different approaches during budget season. Approach number one is you are Mr. Optimist and the bearer of good news. You want something, I got it. And then the day after the budget is like, well, what happened to my project? Well, it wasn't me, it was my colleague. And I, I just don't like, I, I don't want you to walk in when I know that I'm going to fight hard for it. That's how, you know, we got money to finish the meth branch trail, we got the two million that we promised for the gym, you know, and that was during much tougher budget times than we have now. We, we kept those promises and, and we had to fight to do that, but I just, I've never been a big believer in the method of operation that says, you know, I'm going to promise something for everyone, and, and I've never been around here during an election year, Mark, and I can just tell you this, it's a hell of a lot different this year than I've seen in the last three years, and I, I won't go any further than that.
It feels like Christmas time.
You're starting to look a lot like...
I had three specific requests I wanted to make with you, though. One is on the healthcare committee and the RFP that's being done. I'm assuming there's going to be a citizen committee to look at the works, to provide advice and input from the community. And we would definitely, we've talked about our own healthcare committee, but you're going to have far more resources than we're ever going to have, and I think it's critical that we represent us from Tacoma Park on whatever committee gets formed and to accept...
Well, one thing I would suggest along those lines, which I hadn't thought about until you made your comment, is if you haven't, I would suggest... you made your comment, is if you haven't, I would suggest having a dialogue with the Commission on Health. It's some really, it's another example of how lucky we are to live in Montgomery County. You've got these remarkably talented, you know, NIH employees and other healthcare experts. I would strongly recommend that someone, you know, from the council reach out to the chair, and I can get you all the contact information you need, and just say, hey, this is a big issue for us. Can we come and brief you? And in turn, make sure that you're engaged, because, you know, we're going to look to the Commission on Health for some guidance. And I'm always concerned that our commissions and bores are underutilized. And this is a very important project, and they have the heft to do this. And so we should figure out how we can do that.
My second request is related. I know that the hospital didn't file because of the, at least they said, because of the complications of the land transfer that were going on in Montgomery County. And I would certainly hope that the county would hold off sales of any land to Washington Venice until this issue is resolved, because if you wind up selling them the land they want for their campus, it's almost prejudging that that's where it's going to go. Or we create another problem with the commission maybe discovering this isn't the best thing, and Venice having a contract on the land, or even beginning the process of acquiring it. So I would hope that the county would not let the sale of land, in this case, proceed, you know, a resolution, or at least, you know, a stating or establishment of the county position about whether this is a good thing in the first place. In the extent that you have some leverage, I think it would be helpful to use that leverage. The last request is, I've had, I met with Robert Goldman from Montgomery Housing Partnership, and Joe Galili from the county housing office, and talking about the housing fund. And we've been talking about, you're welcome to do about condo conversions, welcome to do about the loss of affordable housing. And one of the things they pointed out was that the emphasis in the current housing, for the use of the current housing fund, has increasingly become special needs housing, which is a good thing, because special needs housing is scarce. But with the limited amount of money that's in the fund, it's not leaving a lot of money left over for the acquisition of affordable housing for people who aren't special needs. And they said they've been especially hard hit, because units that they could acquire for about $25,000 to $30,000 a unit, only two or three years ago, they're spending $100,000 a unit for now. So they've got, you know, the pot of money hasn't grown with the escalation of the units that they're trying to buy. And so they need more money in that housing fund. And that's not at the Tacoma Park project, I think it's, you know, broader for the county. But I hope that, you know, you all in the council will look at meeting those needs.
One thing I would call to your attention, and I should have brought it with me, is there's an annual report of the Housing Initiative Fund, and among other things, it was just released, I just read it two weeks ago, and it outlines how the money was spent in the preceding year. And if you look at the, how the money was spent, among other things that you'll note, and I had my staff actually do this, because there are percentages, it's something like 60% of the dollars spent, and it's roughly, in the past year, it was about $17 million in the fund. Roughly 60% of the dollars spent were in District Five. And a lot of it, as I'm learning how the program operates, some of it is situational slash reactive. And let me give you an example of what I mean by that. We have a situation with Charter House in downtown Silver Spring. I got calls from constituents, including people who were 102 years old. Basically, the place had gone to heck in a handbasket, and there was a, the owner out of, basically, an absentee landlord from South Florida was trying to get rid of it so that it could be converted. And that was a very expensive project. I advocated that we fund it, because I truly believe that revitalization that displaces, you know, 102-year-old widows who have been living there for 30, 35 years is not, that's not revitalization. And so we spent $6.9 million to save Charter House, a lot of money. We're having a debate right now on 527 Dale Drive. The cost per unit there is a couple hundred thousand dollars, roughly. Lot of money, Handen Lane. Cost per unit there, roughly a couple hundred thousand dollars. Those two populations are populations of people who are formerly homeless, and those will always be very, very needy and expensive populations to serve. We are woefully behind in our meeting of the goal to end homelessness. We've, you know, we built Seneca Heights up in Gaithersburg, we've got the Ambassador in Wheaton, and that's about all we have to show for this wonderful blueprint that we prepared six years ago. And so your point is a good point. The challenge is that we're choosing between remarkably worthy causes, and we're frequently reacting to situations that, where you have 30 days to either save something or forever lose your piece. And that was the case of Charter House. And if I had to do over again, I candidly acknowledge I would do it again, because that was a special needs population that I thought we should try to preserve. And I thought the message it sends for Silver Spring revitalization, that, you know, we're willing to, you know, throw our great-grandmothers out in the spirit of urban renewal, that wasn't something I wanted to be part of. And so I know you appreciate the dilemmas.
Yes, sure.
You know, by the same token, you know, Houston Avenue, I mean, you don't, you want, if there's an equally compelling case to be made, that we should be saving all of those units as well. And so there's a, there's a lot of high ground here. There's just not a lot of, there's not enough high money to get everybody to the high ground. And that's, I think, part of the challenge. Because 6.9 million, you do the simple division, that's, you know, seven out of 17 million went to one project, and that's whatever, you know, 40% of the fund, the high 30s.
Their point was they couldn't, they can't leverage the money on special needs projects.
Correct.
Because they're never intended to make money, so they're not paying.
And that's the same point with 527 Dale Drive, is that you're just, it's never going to be a financial winner. I've heard some people have talked about, well, that should be workforce housing. You're talking about one-bedroom apartments. First of all, we don't have a workforce housing program, so that's a new word in the lexicon. We have an MPDU program, that would not fit 527 Dale Drive, it wouldn't fit Handen Lane. And so they're talking about a construct that doesn't really exist. And I actually happen to believe that as we address the challenge of homelessness, that we should make sure we find locations across the county, whether it's Silver Spring, Wheaton, Bethesda, Gaithersburg, Potomac. You know, that's been a conversation we've had for a while. So those are all good questions. And I've certainly developed a much more acute appreciation, Mark, for the dilemmas, especially when I got the cost figures on Charter House, because I knew it was going to be expensive. I didn't know it was going to be that expensive. But again, I would respectfully observe that I would do it no differently. And I go there and I see what we accomplished, and there's a great outfit running the place. It has turned around.
Tom, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you so much for the outreach you have done to our municipal government. It's, we're really lucky to have you, and you make it easy for us to have this conversation about the issues that are important to us and get updates from you about what you know from the county level. I also want to thank you for your work to keep our fire truck here in Tacoma Park. I think that's critical, and I don't begrudge Silver Spring getting theirs, but I do think that we need to see the purchase locked in before there's any transfer, temporary, though it may be. I have a couple of questions for you. One is about the historic Tacoma request of the county. Have you decided where you stand on that? And then I'll ask you the other one.
Sure. I met with them yesterday, met with them today, and told them, very similar to what I told you. I hope that we can fund the gym, I hope that we can fund the full $260,000 of their request. But again, our fiscal capacity is far outstripped by the demand on the money. And so, you know, I hope that we can do everything, but as I said to them, I don't want to mislead you to walk out of here and say, oh, this is all done, ecstatic. You know, we'll certainly work our hardest to make that happen. But just as it is with the gym, just as it is with, there's a project to fund some after-school programs. There's the Trolley Museum up in Olney that wants some money. And I tell everybody the same thing, you really got to work, you know, and talk to all nine members. And everybody knows that, you know, our friends, our mutual friends that starts to come are very dedicated servants, and everybody's doing it volunteer, and they've been putting 110% into it. And so, you know, I very much appreciate that. And it's, they haven't been to the well before, and that's something that is, I think, a helpful thing, because one-time requests have a tendency to become a four-time request, a seven-time request. I've learned that.
Not that we would represent anything like that.
Yeah, I won't, I won't, I won't get specific, okay? We'll just say that.
We've never been there seven times.
So anyway, so the short answer is, I hope we can do, you know, everything, but I don't want to mislead you, and I did not want to mislead them into thinking that it is a lock, when at least statistically, we have $3 of requests for every dollar that I expect we'll have in capacity.
Okay, thank you. The last question I have for you is about immigration reform. The city council tonight is going to take up a resolution about.
Probably next week.
Oh, next week?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we received it tonight. I wonder, is the county, do you know of any initiatives at the county level that are going forward to try and influence immigration reform?
Well, we did something today, it was a press conference that Marilyn Fraser and I put on, which was to announce our investment in adult literacy. As you know, regardless of where you stand in the immigration debate, I've heard Bob Erlich say that people need to learn English, and I've heard Ted Kennedy say that people need to learn English. The problem is that Bob Erlich doesn't back up his words with actions. We get roughly $300,000 of state money for adult ESOL programs in Montgomery County, whereas the county is spending a million, and we receive about a million three from the feds. And so we have initiative underway to increase it to by 300,000, so that we will be at par with the feds. That'll enable us to get almost 600 people off of the wait lists. There's roughly 2,200 people on the waiting list to learn English. And nobody who wants to learn English ought to have to wait. And there's nobody who can speak to the need for that more than Mark, because I know my daughter's fourth grade class at Rolling Terrace, there are kids in that class who have been here a month, there are kids who've been here all their lives, there are kids who are in ESOL Level One, and there are kids who are reading at an eighth grade level. What I know about all those kids is that they are all gifted and talented. And our challenge is to draw out those gifts and talents. And one way to draw them out is to ensure that our parents can speak English, so they can help their kids with their homework, so that they can aspire to do something even better that pays a better wage. And so that's what we did today. I reflected a lot, because I was at the rally three weeks ago, and I've been involved in a lot of conversations about immigration reform. And we reflected a lot about what we can do at the county level to really demonstrate our commitment. And we concluded that actually, you know, having this, taking this action and providing an opportunity for 600 people, 585, something like that, to get off the waiting list was a good way to express our solidarity. In addition, I'm not sure whether we're doing a resolution. I know that we were approached, I certainly support it, and I've spoken to George, and I frankly don't know where that is right now at the council. But we did act on the other issue, because I really wanted to, you know, we wanted to get that moving forward.
Okay, well, thank you. That sounds great, and I'm glad to know about it. And just so, you know, the council members, Clay and Siemens and I have all been part of putting together an affordable housing forum here in the city. It's May 23, and we're looking for some new tools for making sure that we can maintain our housing stock in an affordable fashion.
Well, I appreciate your leadership in taking that on. It is, I have never seen an issue more than affordable housing. Four years ago, it was called a sleeper issue during the campaign. I remember that well. It's awake, it's alive. And I have really not seen an issue where more people of good faith are coming around the table with, you know, all their brain power, and in many cases, some money. And yet, you look at all the metrics, and on a good day, we're treading water. And furthermore, if you go to other places in the country and you tell them you're from Montgomery County, and they think you're the cast me out. And so if we're the best that we have going nationally, and the MPDU program was a wonderful program, you know, it's remarkable, the amount of units that have been generated. 29% of the units nationally generated through inclusionary zoning were generated here in Montgomery County. We've got a lot to be proud of, but I'm kind of what have you done for me lately kind of person. And we're generating a couple hundred units from that program now. It's one piece, and it's frankly now a small piece of the overall affordable housing challenge. And we really need to look, you know, we really need to look very, very creatively. I was with the mayor of San Jose recently, and, you know, they literally bought up land and built housing for their teachers, because it's so expensive in the Silicon Valley. And so they literally did that, and that was their way of attempting to address it. So it's time for, we can't spend enough time on this issue, and anyone who calls it a sleeper issue this election cycle has their head in the sand.
Well, thank you. I don't see any other questions. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Jerry has a question.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. I just had a couple issues I wanted to talk to you about, the ladder truck and also the affordable housing. As I talk about the ladder truck, remember my perspective is, you know, bird in the hand is worth two in the bush.
Absolutely, especially along Maple Avenue.
Yeah, and I do represent Maple Avenue, which is the densest population in the city. I don't mean to diminish the value of a ladder truck. Certainly, they are important and have their place, and they're valuable, not just for high-rise apartments, but for other types of fires. But as I see that, you know, the need in the larger community may mean that we don't have a ladder truck, I know that one of the other.
Temporarily.
Temporarily. One of the other real values that we would be losing is the staffing power, the firefighters that go along with that truck. And I wonder if there isn't a way to keep that additional staff, or that staffing here in Tacoma Park, because the number of firefighters arriving on the scene immediately, you know, time matters in a fire. And having the firefighters on the scene, whether it be with a different truck or increasing staffing level on the trucks that remain in Tacoma Park for this coming year, if that might not be a bird in the hand, that's very valuable.
I'll certainly talk to Chief Carr. I haven't, I haven't had that discussion with him. I do know that in terms of, I think they're telling me something. I do know that in terms of, these are my kids. This is Susanna, who used to play soccer with a certain someone, Keegan. And this is Amalia, who's going to be a fifth grader, fourth grade or second grader, Rolling Terrace.
Do you have a certain one there?
I do want to note, and this is Tacoma Kids School, Tacoma Children's School, three-year-old. And I do want to commend Mr. Elrich, as many kids got into the magnets from Rolling Terrace as from Pinecrest this year. So another feather in his cap. So I have, I haven't had that conversation with him, and I would say that one thing, I have looked at the data, and the overwhelming calls for a response in Tacoma Park are for, are not for the ladder truck, are for EMT services. And, you know, but I will.
I appreciate, I really appreciate the amount of time you've put in this issue already.
Oh, is this important?
Yes.
This is the bread and butter of local government.
I just ask you to chase that down. And then affordable housing, as you said, it's, you know, we have an affordable housing crisis, not just here locally, but regionally. And I'm just curious, I know you've talked some about the difficulties, but I wonder if you could tell us some of what the, it looks like the county council is going to be trying to do to do a little bit better job in this coming, in this coming year.
Well, I mean, we're, you, we're going to do, we're going to do a lot of things. I'm confident that what we will conclude at this conference is that there's no one quick fix, there's no one magic bullet. I mean, we have the largest local housing initiative fund of any county in the United States. You know, again, our MPDU program is the envy of the nation. We now have Closing Cost Assistance Program. I mean, we're, on a certain level, we've really been doing a number of things, but market forces being what they are, it really. are, it really, again, on a good day, we're treading water. And, and part of, there's a proposal to establish a workforce housing program. I don't serve on that committee. My own view is frankly, it's not ready for primetime. It's not, it's a great sounding program, but in reality, I'm actually very concerned that it's gonna have the unintended consequence of reducing the incentive for people to build multifamily housing, because it, it may create incentives to build single-family housing, or, you know, housing for, housing that will not be rental housing. And so, there's a, I have far more questions than I have answers on the issue of quote-unquote workforce housing. So, my own view is that it's not ready for primetime, and that we really, before we undertake something like that, we really need to understand the consequences of that. So, that's one thing we're certainly talking about.
Right.
I also think we, let's not overlook the simple things. We have a very good friend, she's on her soccer team, I helped coach their soccer team. They just sold their house. They live in Ward Six, they live right off of, they live on, right off of Urshkine, Elton Ward.
Minter Place!
No, we live on Minter Place, buddy. But, hey, tell them where you live. What's your address, buddy? He can tell you. Anyway, and they-
I'm going to learn.
That's right. That's right. Anyway, could you, they just sold their house, and they moved literally across the street from us. We're ecstatic, because their oldest is her age, and their youngest is his age. And they sold it to an immigrant family, and they absolutely got screwed in the process of getting a mortgage. I mean, this, this, and parenthetically, our friend's sister is a mortgage banker. She called me a couple months ago to say, "What are you doing to me? I know you're trying to do good things, but man, this is making my life difficult." She called me over the weekend to say, "Those people got screwed." And so, I think we really need to take a look at a lot of our processes. They paid an interest rate that was like two and a half points higher than their interest rate. They paid three points for their loan. She paid none. Her sister offered, her sister is a mortgage broker, she offered to do their loan for free, because she wanted, she was trying to help her sister. And she was like, "If I can help make this happen, I'll do it for free." They, they didn't want to get involved, frankly, because the person that they were dealing with spoke Spanish. And oftentimes, the people that are engaged in this activity lure you in because they speak your language. So, it's not just people, you know, it, it's all sorts of ways, shapes, and forms. So, I mean, I, I think we gotta take a look at a lot of things here. And I was frankly stunned when I heard from some people, including but not limited to the editorial board of the, of the Gazette newspapers, that our lending bill was a solution in search of a problem. You know, we live in Montgomery, not Mayberry, and it's just hard for me to believe that in the year two thousand and six, that people are still wondering whether discrimination exists in lending. And so, I think we need to look at every aspect of the problem. And I think we need to look at some of the simple solutions. If this family had had three thousand dollars for closing assistance, I think they could have gotten to the finish line. So, sometimes we're trying to get too cute with what we're doing, when some of the low-hanging fruit might help a lot of people. And-
I really appreciate your leadership on the predatory lending bill, and-
And I appreciate that you came in, Terry. I remember it well, and I appreciate it. You got, you got people signing petitions even. I recall that as well.
All right, I, just one last thing, and that is, I ask you to keep in mind, as you talk about workforce housing, that we keep in mind those that aren't workforce. You know, we have a lot of residents in the county who are very low-income, and, and I don't want them to get lost as, as we talk, you know-
It's a four-legged stool.
Yeah.
It's, it's workforce housing for our nurses and firefighters, it's housing for people with special needs, people with disabilities, it's housing for people living below poverty or at poverty, and it's housing for seniors. It's a four-legged stool. And sometimes the debate about workforce housing, it's, it, there's a, there's a, it's a very real issue. I mean, it really is. I mean, twenty-two percent of our firefighters live in the county, and seventy-eight percent don't. So, it's a real issue, don't get me wrong, but it can't be the only issue. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Always a pleasure to be home with my friends.
And you, you have been, and I, I take very seriously the comments about not unlimited budget money for the fix that we need.
You know that bill.
But on the other hand, I appreciate the, the work that you've done advocating for us in the past, and I know you'll do the same for us again, and we very much appreciate-
We will definitely do that, and I can give you that assurance, Joy, as it relates to your question. So, we can always give a hundred percent to try and make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
I think I'm at the end of my road here.
Thank you.
He's grabbing my keys now. Okay, buddy, let's go.
Leaving without you.
With money.
Okay.
Sounds like your constituents, Tom, if he wants money.
Okay. Apologies to the city manager for taking the, the county council member ahead of you, but I knew we were gonna have a limited amount of time.
What I might suggest is obviously there's, I need about five minutes of the council's time, but I would ask it in deference to some of the residents who are here this evening, that perhaps if the council's amenable, we go ahead and do the other items and do my report at the end.
Okay, we can, we can do that. In that case, we will move on to the special session items. The first one is an ordinance authorizing a contract for consultant services related to Tacoma Metro.
Good evening. In February of this year, the city manager retained a firm, Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associates of New York City, to perform some specialized transportation research for the city as we prepared for the March Fourth WAMADA planning workshop related to the Tacoma Metro development proposal. And that was a project that was under the five thousand dollar cap. They allowed her to proceed with that. We were under a very short timeframe, if you remember, in getting a review of information in preparation for that March Fourth hearing. We anticipate that more specialized work will be needed. This firm did an excellent job in reviewing a large amount of data, in presenting areas that look like areas that needed to be, something that needed further research, and we wanted to make sure that we went through a procurement process that got them on retainer, so that when, if and when WAMADA does publish a new development plan, or the same development plan, give us the thirty-day notice, or whatever we get, that we'll have this firm on retainer to do the work in a short period of time. What we have done is included a resolution, it's a two-reading ordinance with a second reading next week, and the, as it indicates that this is a firm that has the skills, we went through the correct procurement procedures in the first phase of this. The second phase does go on a materials and time basis, and not a flat fee, because we don't know what will be required when we see what is issued. And so what we have is a schedule in the second part of this resolution that identifies the fee schedule for staff person for this. The general government contract account would be the line item that this would be charged to. I'm happy to answer any questions in my hand.
Would someone like to move the ordinance?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does the council have any questions or comments? Are there any public comments on this ordinance?
I'm Lorraine Tressaw, Vice President of Story Tacoma. We think it's probably a good idea to do. Sabrina and I actually just realized though tonight, embarrassed to say, that there was a report, and we were at the March Fourth meeting, so we've asked Suzie to get us a copy of the, the first report that they did. We'd really like to see it for the second reading, and she's gonna, she's going to do that. So, and it may even be on the website. We weren't quite sure of that, but, but nevertheless, it seems like this, this is a good idea, and we're, we're just going to review what was done before, so we can talk to you next time.
Okay. It was also, it was the material that I passed out in our meeting with Cheryl Corr, too.
Okay.
So, you, you actually may already have it, although if you're like me, you probably have a lot of paper, you don't know what it is.
Right.
Any other comments? All right. This is the first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ordinance passes at first reading. Mrs. Dan said we'll take it up for second reading next week. The next one is a ordinance authorizing the lease purchase of police cruisers.
What we've outlined for you is the first step in a program to provide take-home cars for all our officers. And we're asking tonight for the authorization to purchase nine vehicles this year, and these will be leased purchased over five years payment. And this is a cooperative purchase through Baltimore County and the Ford municipal leasing agreement. If the council approves this, then we're gonna move forward with a take-home car policy that would ultimately provide take-home cars for all our police officers. We think this is good for several reasons. It's certainly good for the officers, but I think it's gonna be good for the city overall to put us in a bar in our recruiting incentives. This is one area that we're not at a bar with, with other jurisdictions. So, we think that will be a big help there. And as you know, this has been an ongoing debate between local 400 and, and the city for as long as I've been here, which is fifteen years. So, I think now is the time that we probably should approve this. So, we're asking permission to do that tonight. The monies, the, the first year payment would be sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. There's sixty-six thousand dollars in the capital improvements budget for this year to fund vehicles. The remainder can be taken out of the city manager's contingency fund, the two thousand eight hundred. Each year, we would have to come back to the council for approval of the next year's purchase, so that you got a constant review of the program as we go. So, you know, although if we go forward with this, we're probably gonna wind up doing something with the, the local 400 contract that will commit us to, to some further actions on this.
Does someone want, did you have something else?
No questions, please.
I'd like to move it.
It's okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on this? Terry?
I have several questions. You know, this is a good idea, and it's an incentive for recruiting, but it's unclear from the paperwork, or maybe I didn't, missed it in here, and that is, how, who gets the take-home car if we don't have enough for everybody in the first, in first couple of years, five years?
It's a, you know, it's a policy that we worked out with the union and with the police department. Where basically, it's gonna go according to need, is the first thing, like K-9 handlers, some of the command group who have to be on call, some of the CID did have to be on call all the time.
Those are the ones that already have them now.
And most of those already have them now. The second would be people who live in the city, and a lot of those have them now, but that would be the second priority. And the third would be rank, and the fourth would be seniority within rank.
Okay. And, and my concern then is that if we're using this as a recruiting incentive, that for this year, those who are recruited might be two thousand twelve before they would actually have take-home cars.
We should be able to reach by two thousand nine, I believe, forty-one vehicles. Yeah. Well, it says forty-one, but as we go along, we'll have to modify that.
It says we can increase-
Yeah, no, you're right.
We can increase the fleet to the desired level by two thousand twelve.
By two thousand twelve. We can satisfy the local police officers, the current staff, by oh-nine. And then-
And again, I, I go-
We're not gonna, we're not gonna give it to a new officer until after he's been here a year and served his probation. And that's a normal condition.
Right, but it'll help who won't be given it to him for six years. And my concern is, if it's a recruiting incentive, it's six years out before they end up with a car.
At, at least they'll know the program's on, on board, on books, which is kind of what we're looking at.
At this point, they have no hope, because we don't have it, unless they move it to the city.
It's better than nothing, but it's not-
It's just gonna take us a while to get there.
For a young guy that's looking for take-home cars.
I'll go there quicker if the council wants to give us more money. I don't think we can afford that.
Well, and that's, and that's kind of what I'm advocating, is that maybe we need to look at how we can do it quicker. I don't know. Obviously, it costs money to do that, but I'm talking more to the council than I am to you about that. It's not much of a recruiting incentive to say, six years from now, you're gonna have a take-home car if what we're competing with is an agency that's, that's talking about doing it in a, in a much shorter period of time. The other, the other question I had is, it says in here that this, the cost estimates are based on fully equipped cars, including the in-car computers?
That's correct.
I know that this council spent quite a bit of money on in-car computers, and I've been disappointed to hear that most of those computers don't work. What's the story there?
The, they're transitioning over to the, the county PSCS system, and that's taking longer, longer than anticipated to accomplish, but they're working through the technical issues now.
But those, those computers were working?
Some were working on the park police system, and there was a difference in vendors in the, the item that connects the CDP modems that connect. That technology went out of, out of fashion, the company didn't support it any longer. So, transitioning to a new type of modem is what's taking a long time to work out.
But the computers that were working on the, on the parking planning system, still had that equipment, and still could be working on the parking planning computer.
There, there were a number of them that had newer modem than a CDP modem. Had been purchased about two years ago, and those few computers are still working on the county, on the park system, yes.
Okay, but I guess I'm concerned about the ones that aren't working on the park system.
Yes.
Why, why they're not working on the-
Because they had the CDP modems, which are no longer, that service no longer provided by Verizon.
I, I just find it very disconcerting that we've spent so much money for these computers, and they're driving around in cars, closed, shut down, nothing happening. Do you have a time estimate for when that will be resolved?
My understanding, talking to people in administrative services, it's expected to be within the next month or two.
How long have they been out?
Since the beginning of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Wayne, do you have a sense of how much we've been spending on average for the police cars that we currently got? Just, I'm thinking it would be helpful to know that figure.
We've been putting, we missed a couple years where we didn't purchase any, but it's been around sixty thousand dollars, which is basically, if we bought new vehicles without all the equipment, would fund three vehicles. And as you know-
And that would, that would, if we, if we didn't change, that would be an amount that would kind of keep the current program going.
Right, right, right. And, and what, what we did a few years ago, as you recall, we bought and rehabbed a lot of vehicles, and that has been proven to be not a very good idea.
Right.
Learned by experience that those, you can put, replace an engine and whatnot, but the body is still a piece of junk. And so, we need to get those out of the force. And that's a good part of what this nine that we're proposing this year, and the six that we would propose to buy next year, is to replace the, and bring the fleet up to-
Right. So, so it sounds like-
Modernize the fleet.
The opportunity cost of the change in policy would take us from about sixty thousand a year to roughly, in round terms, two hundred thousand a year over time.
Yes.
So that what we're looking about is a hundred and forty thousand a year to come up with something that will greatly improve our, should greatly improve our recruiting and retention. And I think in that context, a hundred and forty thousand a year could go, could go a long way toward improving our position.
Can I ask a math question? Does that interrupt you?
No, could you just interrupt?
But I, that's right, your number was one forty, but does that, does that include the ninety thousand we wouldn't be spending on officers that don't have take-home cars? So, is it really one forty, or it'd just be nothing?
We're, we're, our, the proposal is on the table with the union right now, is do away with the take-home car allowance effective July one of this year.
Do away with the allowance, but not provide the cars?
To pour that money into the cars, so that ultimately we'll, we'll get there.
So, if we were looking at this-
It's a sticking point, but I mean, I don't-
So, if we were looking at this in the-
We prefer not to get a whole lot into it tonight, because it's, it's on the table for negotiation.
But from our perspective, if it's a hundred and forty thousand, is it really a hundred and forty thousand?
Well, I did not, I did not budget the 87,000, 89,000 for that.
Right, but in terms of the comparison, it shrinks the difference.
Yeah, that's right. You subtract 87,000 from this, and that would be what the actual cost of what we're spending now.
We're spending all of this now and not getting the bang for the buck.
That's correct.
So that is 50.
Yeah.
I was actually going to ask Mark's question and another one. Sorry, I don't mind. The other question is, I remember in the briefing that you said that the cars wouldn't be hot-seated, which meant that they wouldn't have one person getting in the vehicle right after somebody had just gone out and been running 24 hours.
That's correct. It'll be one driver per car.
Right. And that there might be some savings or longevity of the vehicle.
We, we, the current policy is that a car lasts five years, and that waivers from year to year. And we're, we base these figures on a seven-year lifetime expectancy.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
What is Montgomery County's experience with flight time vehicles since they?
It's about seven years. That's the, the national figures that I was given. Take-home cars last longer, the officers take better care of them. They're, they're less apt to hit a speed bump going too fast.
Yeah. Just one other question. How, how many of these cars in the, are going to be just replacements for vehicles that we currently have in the fleet?
They're, they're all replacement right now, the first 15, nine this year and the six next year, but we're going to give more take-home cars to people.
Okay.
Which, right now, our own policy is that the people we talked about who have a, a need, the command groups, some CID, K-9, and the city people who live in the city, we will start giving.
So we wouldn't be keeping old cars to actually increase the number of cars in the fleet gradually?
We may keep, we may keep some of the old cars to, to, for the fleet purpose, for the everyday use until we get up to strength, the better cars. We may, we may keep those in on a selected basis. Is that correct?
Yes. Try to evaluate the car on its, you know, on its particular condition. Most of them are past the prescribed.
Yeah, I guess my confusion is that if we have, if we're just replacing one for one, the cars that we have, then that's no more additional take-home cars because assume, presumably, we have just as many cars as we need now, not extra ones sitting around.
We have some extras because you, you need to have floats as cars go down, and we'll still have, still have some need for that.
Out of, out of the first nine, I don't believe there would be any that would be designated. But out of the next batch, several, several would go to assignments, and then what that would allow and the number of officers that we're reducing from the amount using the fleet, then there are additional fleet cars that could also be made assignments. So we expect to make a fair number of assignments in the next, in the next purchase.
The next purchase is the six?
Which will be back, hopefully, if you, if the money we put in the budget is approved, will back, be back here in July asking for some more cars.
Thanks, yeah. And I, I think it's, I mean, this is a bit complicated, but it seems to me, looking at the numbers that you've given us, that it looks like for the first couple of years, we are replacing cars that were part of this experiment where we were going to try and get more cars for less money by rehabilitating older cars. And as you've mentioned, it appears was a good idea, but it appears not to have been very successful and that the cars didn't last as long as we'd anticipated. So it looks like for the first two years, we are simply replacing those cars. But you have come to the council and you have said that you would like a policy change in the past as a way of trying to be efficient in the use of our police cars. We have not assigned cars to officers to take home, except for the people who are on call 24 hours a day or the people who live in the city of Tacoma Park.
That's correct.
And the council has agreed to make a change in policy, and the reason for that change is to make us more competitive in recruiting. I think that we should, you know, look at whatever we can do to make these cars available earlier rather than later. We're also down a few officers at the moment.
That's correct.
And if that doesn't change, which I hope it does, but if it doesn't change, then we will cover everyone sooner than fiscal 12. But hopefully, with the incentive, even if it's a few years down the road, we will be more successful recruiting. This is something the council had not done in the past because of the cost involved in the extra cars, but I do understand that it's also the last difference between us and other police departments in terms of the things that we can offer incoming officers.
There's still some others, and we'll talk about those in future.
Well, the, the chief told us it was the last big one.
I think it is the last big one.
So we are, we are competitive on salaries, we are competitive on benefits, and the take-home cars were sort of the last big barrier. And so I, even though it is going to be costly for the city, I think it's worth it if we can keep our police department up, more up to strength in this very competitive environment. Yes?
I'd like to see at least a budget option that accelerates this. What is, what is the cost during over two years, what's the cost of doing it over three years?
Say.
I'd like to know what the cost of doing it would be over two years and three years as opposed to this scenario. Assuming that, I mean, I don't know what to assume. How many officers do we have right now?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Is that the total of what's coming in and what's going out? Is that a net total?
That's a net total, yes, yeah, that includes everybody as we.
And what do you anticipate being at next year?
I'd be at 41.
How many people do you have in the academy that are going to come on?
We have none in the academy right now.
You have none in the academy? So regardless of what you want to be next year, what are the odds of being at 38 or 39 next year? Is that attainable at this point?
We've, we've been recruiting officers who already have experience and who don't need to go through the academy. So we've been pulling in people who can get beyond duty quicker than people who have to start off the academy.
I'm just wondering if this would be a factor in recruiting.
How many, how many officers are in the process of trying to change to another agency now for another jurisdiction?
That wouldn't be information that I would have. I know of only one officer that's scheduled to have some background work at a department, but it's not uncommon for an officer to not share that information with the department if they're a home.
Thank you.
I would think by this time next year, with, with aggressive and effective recruiting effort, that we could probably fill some slots in the academy in late fall and have them graduating this time next year hitting the street.
I would like us to consider in terms of our recruiting, doing the housing down payment plan. And the only reason I bring it up in this situation because, you know, we're checking for this, is because if we're going to talk about more money to build up the cars, I think we might have, we might have a program that appeals to a different set of folks if we also had it at down.
Why don't we make that part of our, our discussion? We'll have a discussion of the police department as part of our budget discussion, and that would be an appropriate time, although perhaps the, see, the deputy city manager could make a note of that for our future budget discussion.
I already have collected some information.
I guess, just so you can be clear about what I was thinking about, and I agree that this, we might be able to fact, we ought to look at and maybe factor it in, but suppose we know we're only going to go to, or it's only realistic to get the 38 officers, and we're going to budget for 41 on the line, and we're going to, so we're going to have three slots that we know aren't going to be filled. And I guess sort of what I'm thinking is, why don't we take the money that we would have paid for officers and use this as a chance?
Don't we spend it on overtime? Don't we spend it on overtime?
Let's, let's, this is a budget discussion. Can I suggest, we, we're going to spend a fair amount of time discussing the police department budget, and that would be the appropriate time for these discussions. So what we have. Yes. What we, what we, it's been moved and seconded. What we have in front of us is a single reading ordinance authorizing the lease purchase of nine, I believe, cruisers. And so let's, let's stick to that, and when we get to the budget discussion, the police department is one of the areas we're going to focus on, and we'll have plenty of time to do, to cover all of those. Is there any other council discussion on this ordinance? Is there any public discussion on this ordinance?
Yes, I got one.
Yes, I got one comment I'd like to make. Yes, this is Mr. Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I just got one comment I'd like to make on the police cars. If you get them and they can take the cars home, it'd be nice if you could put them in high-crime areas of the city and only allow people from our city to take the cars home. Because, you know, the sight of a police car in itself may deter some people from committing a first offense crime. And the, and we need police officers, we're going to have those cars, we're going to be ready to enforce the law on drugs. It would have been wonderful if we've had a little more police officers on our force a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago, and we had a stabbing in our parking lot. Yes, we had a stabbing in our parking lot of senior citizens, disabled housing, a stabbing in our parking lot, and I've been scared to go in that section of the lot ever since. Lucky it wasn't me. But yes, if we can get police officers, recruit police officers, decent police officers who are willing to enforce the laws of our city and our state and our county. And also, the best officers should earn those cars to take home. They should be in strategic high-crime locations in our city, and our city officers who live in our city should be the ones to have those cars. That will, that will cause less use of the cars and high visibility of our police force. We need police force with high visibility and willing to do the job at a moment's notice without any guff, without any crap, without any, you know, I'll come by later, no, and this, and there should be no. The law is the law, enforce it, and that way they get their car. Thank you very much. So let me share.
Thank, thank you. Actually, that's the policy that we have now, that officers who live in the city of Tacoma Park can have a take-home car now. What we're talking about doing is expanding it to all of the officers, and we're doing it as a recruiting tool.
That would be great if you could do it as a recruiting tool, but also they should, and seven that cars should be ready to respond at a moment's notice. No matter, no matter what section of the city they're in, if they have that car, the responsibility to enforce the law should go with that car. Even have that car for one minute to take home, they should be willing to respond at a moment's notice.
Thank you. We, we do have a number of officers who are basically on call for, for whatever our needs are. Did you want to say?
And just to address also a question Mr. Simmons asked earlier, the ability to trump seniority is there if an officer decides to move into the city and take up residence here in the city. So they, that can be irrespective of their seniority.
Right, right. All right. Any other, any other public comments? All right. This is a single reading ordinance, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay? Here, I'm sorry, yes. Aye. Councilmember Aldridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
All right, the ordinance, the single reading ordinance passed, but thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we're running behind our schedule, and so my recommendation to the council is maybe if you get hungry or whatever, that you just pop out and that we just keep moving. I think we're going to. Well, if one has to visit the restroom, that you just do it, and we don't have a formal, formal break. So we'll move on to the report on the walkable community workshops.
Hi, I'm David Sols. I'm the associate planner with the city. And I'll just speak briefly on the walkable communities report. The report was based off a series of pedestrian safety workshops sponsored by State Highway Administration in October 2005. The workshops were led by Bob Chauncey, who is the, who works for the National Center of Cycling and Walking. The workshops took place in four areas of Tacoma Park, Piney Branch Road right around here, down to Philadelphia, Tacoma Junction, Flower Avenue by the intersection of Piney Branch, and the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. All of these areas are on state highways, and because of this, the report follows up each recommendation with the initial actions that, that the city can take. In the interest of time, I'll just use one or two examples from each of the areas and just try, try to highlight what the action step is. The recommendations on Piney Branch call for changes made that went beyond SHA's budget, such as installing a sidewalk between Grant's Avenue and Philadelphia. In this case, pursuing grant opportunities may fill this gap in financing. There's currently a grant opportu, a grant called Safe Roots to School that covers infrastructure project, projects that increase the safety of children walking to school. And there are no matching funds required for this. So that's, that's one type of action step is pursuing a grant opportunity. If we move to Tacoma Junction, the recommendations included a roundabout. This was also brought up in Dan Berlin's report in 2003. For this case, before determining firm opinions, the city may ask SHA to perform a feasibility study for this and/or other proposed traffic studies, and this would be at no cost. On Flower Avenue, the sidewalk is full of utilities and obstructions that could require allocating staff time to request changes with SHA and work with SHA Public Works to determine what can be done. The area's developments contribute to the dangerous pedestrian environment, and using this document as guidance for future reviews of redevelopment would probably be helpful. Finally, at the Tacoma Langley Crossroads, road improvements are underway by SHA, and city staff continues to review and make recommendations for these kinds of improvements. But pedestrian safety also includes perception of crime and safety. So in this case, a first step towards changing this perception can be identifying, well, identifying funding sources within the budget for types of local business improvement, identification programs, like a facade improvement program. Finally, continual lobbying for the administration to force or to focus more on pedestrian safety problems is extremely important. Really, it's, it's making sure that Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration knows that they really have to start looking at pedestrian issues much more than they are now. So these are the, these are the types of action steps that the city can take now, the council, the community, and the staff. I just, I encourage you to use this document when pursuing pedestrian safety issues and problems and any type of streetscape and roadwork in the future.
Well, thank you. This also gives me the opportunity to publicize an event that's coming up in Tacoma Park. The county's Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee, Montgomery County's committee that I sit on, is sponsoring, along with the City's Safe Roadways Committee and the Crossroads Pedestrian Safety Committee, a pedestrian safety solutions, dialogue on solutions event. It'll begin at 7:00 PM on May 16th. And a presentation on this, there'll also be a presentation on this, these workshops that were done. It's something that I think goes very much to your last point. Part of the reason for having this event is so the, so the people who live in Tacoma Park can get to know some of the people on the county level and people on the state level who also work on pedestrian safety issues, and will enable us to be more effective in terms of working with those levels of government to achieve safer pedestrian access in Tacoma Park. And I don't know if you or Alana is going to be there, but someone is going to be presenting the walkable community workshops. I think that's going to be an important part of the presentation.
Mayor Porter?
Yes.
I, I was very pleased to be a part of the workshop that, that was held and especially want to bring attention to the Ritchie Avenue crosswalk. The, I, I was driving through there recently. It's, it's really very difficult for cars, and I can't imagine what it's like for pedestrians to get across Ritchie Avenue on Piney Branch, and given that that's a, a common access point for schoolchildren, I, I just think the sooner we address that, the more responsible we're being, given how much we know about the problem. So I very much hope that that can be moved forward. I think all. I think also the issue on Piney Branch where a sidewalk is needed, I know it's a difficult project, but I think that the money needs to be secured to make that go forward. It's been talked about for years, and I don't see anything changing. We still need a safe pedestrian passage there. It's also adjacent to the school, and sees many children traversing it. So if we can make sure that that priority is clear in any presentation that we make about this information, I saw a lot of interest at that point, and I think parents, you know, have just a certain amount of time, and when they show up to say, you know, this has to be addressed around our schools, we need to pay attention. Thank you for putting this together so carefully. It is a valuable resource for us to move forward, and I look forward to the May 16th event, and I appreciate the mayor bringing that to our attention. I think it is critical for us as a municipality to be very familiar with the people at the county level and at the state level who we can work interactively with to move these initiatives forward. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you for this excellent report. Most of, it looks like most of the study was focused on design issues. Were there any statistical analysis done, such as number of, volume of traffic, or times a day that the traffic?
No, as part of the report, part of some of the action steps is actually to obtain that information, and that would be a next step, and that comes with a feasibility study.
Okay, good. And specifically looking at the one that Councilmember Austin Lane mentioned, the crosswalk on Piney Branch Road, I think that as we discuss potential action items for that, that would be really useful to see what the volume of traffic is, especially during school hours, both on Piney Branch Road and on Ritchie Avenue. But, yeah, I think that's an important addition to this before we decide what kind of changes we need. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I have a clear understanding of next steps on this. What kind of, what weight this draft report has, because as I read particularly the section on Tacoma Junction, I thought there were some good ideas, I thought there were some frankly terrible ideas. And I know that there was at least one that has been talked about before that wasn't in here at all, with the section four issue, not enough parking in the area. One that I didn't see here was, we previously talked about possibly linking up all the back parking lots behind the businesses in the 7300 block. So I just wanted to make sure that I know kind of what the council is gonna do with this next, so that, I guess what I'm trying to do is protect against what I consider to be the awful idea of going forward with some kind of imprimatur from the city that we want these looked at with a little more discussion.
And I think that's ultimately up to the council. Obviously, there are a number of items, as Councilmember Austin Lane pointed out, that have been discussed for some time, including the sidewalk specifically on Piney Branch. A lot of the action steps entail the city sending a letter to S H A and asking for some assistance. Obviously, as a staff, we would like to see some of those action steps moved forward, but certainly if the council either would like to discuss this matter at another work session in the future, we're certainly happy to do that, or if you want to identify this evening, those items that you think perhaps merit further discussion before staff would proceed, that's certainly an option as well. So I think it's really up to the council how you'd like to move forward from this point.
Do you see this mainly as an issue of funding? Is there, or is it not so much a budget issue as it is an issue of process and design and where we wanna go?
Mr. Fu can certainly correct me if I'm to speak. I think most of these action steps really are not as much an issue of funding for the city, because they're state roads, they're ultimately an issue of funding by the state, and that really becomes more almost political process and a lobbying process, if you will. And I think there are some items, I noted that, you know, the city certainly plays a role in it in terms of, I think, the true canopy on, is that Piney Branch?
Yes.
Kind of coordinated effort.
But it's really, it's process, almost totally process.
If I can just finish up by saying that the approach that I've always thought needed to be taken with the junction is to have State Highway take a comprehensive look at it, particularly in light of the fire station rebuild, to make sure that both pedestrian and vehicular issues are dealt with, because it seems like we take one step forward and two steps back on the junction in terms of improvement. So, anything we can do to get State Highway to commit to looking at it with fresh eyes as the whole thing goes forward would be good.
Okay.
I confess to being a little bit confused by the next action steps also. I assume that some of these have already had neighborhood discussions, like the issue of Piney Branch, and that asking for, you know, the move forward ought to be an automatic, whereas how to configure Tacoma Junction ought to be certainly a neighborhood discussion at the very least to start with, looking at the different options and then bringing this from there, but tying in the parking behind, wouldn't they just, you know, first go to the neighborhood association to say how they feel about it?
That's been part of that discussion for years.
If they said cool, then we ought to be taking the next steps to try to push that. I'm just, you know, everything, almost everything in here, the action step is like you said, write a letter to S H A. But if this is the result of all this input and everything, then shouldn't we be being asked to do something specific, like make it so, probably tell you to write the letters? I'm just, I'm looking at this to say, okay, so what do you want us to do?
Obviously, I think that the report, I'm now given some specific issues about Tacoma Junction that may merit further discussion. I think in terms of the actual kind of configuration, if you will, of the intersection, staff's specific recommendation is that we ask S H A to do a feasibility study, which I think is very much in line with what Councilmember Williams is suggesting. The intention of bringing this forward tonight, let me also add, as the mayor mentioned, there is a session coming up. Certainly, it's normally our protocol to present information to this council before it would be discussed in any other forum. I would agree with you, Councilmember Elrich, I think many of these things are sort of self-evident, I don't see the council having any opposition to our, you know, pursuing some of these things, but ultimately, that's certainly your prerogative, and we usually do try to discuss it with you first, before we start sending out letters on the city's behalf, asking for assistance from state agencies.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. You know, there are different levels, as Councilmember Elrich pointed out, there's kind of different complexities of projects in here, and I would like to suggest that the issue at the corner of Ritchie and Piney Branch Road is of utmost importance, considering that it involves schoolchildren coming and going to the Tacoma Park Middle School, and I would, and it also is less controversial on kind of the alternatives that are listed here, and I would suggest that this council, or the city manager, whatever way you think, initiate some contact with the state at this time to do a traffic study or whatever other measures seem appropriate to provide the information needed for a decision. I would, I would really like to make sure that if we do do a traffic analysis, that we make sure that it includes a kind of a normal time, which includes school days and doesn't include, you know, holidays and things like that, that unjustly distort figures that we get. Appreciate that.
Let me make a suggestion in terms of perhaps moving us forward. I think that there are three different kinds of recommendations in this report. One is recommendations that probably have been on the table before, there has been some discussion within the neighborhoods, and it's just a question of making them happen. I think the one that Joy mentioned falls in that category, I remember the discussion about it. Then there's some recommendations that are new recommendations, but probably are not gonna be terribly controversial or fairly minor. And then there's a third category, which most of the Tacoma Junction ones fall into, which is something that are fairly major, and we could expect that there would need to be a fair amount of discussion about. And perhaps if we can divide it into those categories or something similar and suitable, we can just sort of look at the ones that basically the council has agreed to, the neighborhood has agreed to, and just figure out how to do them, with the second ones, just, you know, do whatever we need to do in terms of communicating with the adjoining neighborhoods, and then move forward with them, and then initiate a process, and I think the Tacoma Junction ones probably would need a fair amount of process, perhaps beginning with a council discussion of which ones we should even move forward with, that will then take us to whatever steps beyond that we choose to go to. And that might be a way of sort of, we can let the easy ones move forward on their own with more expeditiously on their own speed, and then take more time with the ones that are gonna be more involved. And perhaps, you know, you could sort of assist us by dividing them into those kinds of categories, so we could just move forward on the ones we've dealt with before, deal with some of the easy ones, and then begin a process on some of the more involved ones. Thank you, I appreciate the presentation. We have a short period of time left. My recommendation would be that we give the folks from the Housing Department who have waited through two evenings now, some overall direction, which is what they were looking for on the recommendations that they made to us, and we will have to have another follow-up discussion, but I think I would like to give the council an opportunity to begin sort of this discussion this evening.
In eight minutes?
Well...
We can stay a little longer.
Unless we want to hear the city manager.
The city manager thought that she could do it in five minutes, and I, we can probably go five minutes over, so maybe if we can have the folks from the Housing Department hike, don't wanna keep them waiting through another meeting where they don't actually get to say anything. And perhaps we can just sort of start it with some overall direction. They'd have given us sort of their recommendations, and this is the discussion where we were gonna come back and sort of give them our reactions. Maybe we can give them some overall reactions and then delve into some of the details at a later date. Well, I can give you one overall reaction. There are, it's very hard to talk about individual recommendations, because they do sort of all hang together. But I do think that the capital improvements discussion needs to sort of go to another level of detail before we can sort of have a useful discussion. Bruce brought up at the very end, the previous discussion that we had, a number of items that were not considered capital improvements, that, you know, many of them probably we ought to look at. So certainly looking at the items that are considered capital improvements and not considered capital improvements. Earlier during public comment period, Mark and I had a back and forth about whether the electric upgrade was considered a capital improvement or not. We had a property owner who was contending that it was not, we thought that it was. There needs to be some more discussion of that. But I think we also need to talk about where capital improvements fit in overall with the hardship petition process and the overall increases in rents that come about on a regular basis through some formula, and the coda on this is whether we wanna look at things like energy surcharges, which we began to get into a little bit when you presented your recommendations. There's all sort of that constellation of things that I think probably needs to go to a little bit more detail. And I mentioned one of the things in terms of capital improvements, which is which items are capital improvements and which are not. And I think you mentioned in your discussion, another one, which is the issue of the period of time over which things essentially are expensed or allowed. What did I say, this is probably, you're looking at me like I'm not making any sense.
Thank you. I'll try not to make any sense either.
I didn't mean to give you that impression, Larry.
As I read this, you know, I think there's a number of good ideas, a lot of things to think about and consider, but my impression that I got to the end is that maybe there's a piece that I'm missing, and that is, what are maybe some, we talk about what some of the issues with rent stabilization may be from a landlord's perspective, but I don't see much in there from a tenant's perspective on what issues there might be that need to be resolved from a tenant's perspective. And I know that maybe isn't exactly rent stabilization, but I think that as we're looking at rental housing, that's another aspect of the whole, the whole program that we need to look at. For example, I have heard that, you know, no clause, or no clause termination by the landlord, I think, would be viewed as a, as a negative aspect of being a tenant. And I just wonder if we've given any thought to those kinds of things, of, you know, what improvements might tenants wanna see in our housing laws?
The one you just mentioned is one the state took away. That's an example of the, it was of the need for state legislation to prevent no clause termination, because the city has no authority.
Yeah, I used, I offered that as an example of what I was talking about, of, you know, looking at the rental housing law, I think we should look at it from both perspectives. You know, what are things, whether we can accomplish them or not, whether we want to accomplish anything in addressing those issues, but I think it would be helpful to me to see what are, what are issues from the tenant's perspective, not just from the landlord's perspective or the building owner's.
So you're talking, just for clarification, you're talking about the landlord-tenant ordinance in addition to the rent stabilization ordinance?
I guess what I'm asking is, are there issues that tenants have that, that we could address at the same time, or that we could at least look at and consider at the same
And I also think that we need to continue to look at the issue of condo conversion. The gentleman who made his comments during the public comment period, I think illustrated why condo conversion remains so popular. It's clear that rental housing, any rental housing simply doesn't compare to selling something for owner-occupied housing, and I doubt that anything we do in rent stabilization is gonna change that. So I think if we're gonna deal with the condo conversion issue, which is happening all over the county, I think we are gonna probably have to address that issue again, and probably it's something that we would need the cooperation of the state legislature, but I think we should be thinking about that as we move forward.
Got distracted by that, because I've got a lot of other thoughts coming to my head. Let me go back to what's just specifically relevant for this. That is that I was thinking about how complex the capital improvements are and all of the various issues that go into it, and I was wondering if the staff could come up with a model wherein there was, there must be a standard capital improvement set aside, you know, an operating line item. I remember you talked about a woman who bought a house, and she didn't have any set aside for any capital improvements. There is some percentage that you should have set aside. I wonder if we could come up with a formula that would be universally applicable to all of the units in, under rent stabilization, maybe by unit size, that would be, you know, a charge on the rent every month, and then maybe you could have it set up like an escrow account, where the funds could really only be used for capital improvement and maintenance. So that instead of us always having to calculate it out and calculate what is a capital improvement, did they, did they take it off of some other tax rule? What's capital improvements versus maintenance, and is it getting spent where it should be spent, so that the tenants are getting the benefit? spent so that the, the tenants are getting the benefit of it? I was wondering if there was a mechanism like that where we could have just a charge per unit that's part of the way we calculate what they're allowed to dispend.
Mark?
I guess I'd be concerned that, that you could legally tie landlord's hands and say you can't use this money for anything but capital improvements. I mean, the reality is the tax code provides them with depreciation. The theoretical use of depreciation is not to reduce your taxes and pocket and put the money in your pocket. Depreciation allowance is supposed to be for the smart capitalists to put the money aside to maintain the value of their property from investments. The fact is that most of the time depreciation in rental housing is used basically to line people's pockets, not to provide for the rainy day when they need to change the roof or change the other stuff. This is why people don't have any capital reserves, because they've taken the depreciation and they've spent it. And that's, that's the decision they made. But I-
But if you, if you take capital depreciation, you have to pay taxes on it when you sell it in the long run, so.
But they do take capital depreciation.
Yeah, but then they have to pay capital gains taxes on it because it, it reduces the, the base fee from the start.
Yes.
Pay now, pay later. They pay.
They may pay, but in terms of what tenants get and where the buildings get fixed, it's not happening. I, I agree that we need to simplify the capital petition process. And we need to separate that clearly from, from the hardship petition. And I think we ought to change the name of the hardship petitions to be like the income maintenance petition, whatever it is, so that if we decide to use something like the 60-40 net operating income split, that, that becomes the basis of that petition. If you're not making money, then this is a vehicle to make sure that you, you know, that your investment is, is a successful investment, I guess. On the capital improvements side, and I think, I think the big value in using something like a 60-40 split for net operating income is that the landlords who have been trying to put things into the capital improvement petition that we know don't belong in capital improvement petitions can truly take them as maintenance, which is what they are. And if it drives up their maintenance and total operating expenses above 60%, then they would be able to get rent increases so that whatever they've spent on the building is 60% of the rents. So the tenants win because the stuff that's being done is actually stuff that has to be, maintenance is performed in the building and the landlords aren't trying to use capital improvement petition for every little thing they do in the building because they're afraid it's not going to, it's not going to produce any value for them. So I think those are two areas we've identified that, that we need, that we ought to deal with. And I also think the energy surcharge, I'd really like to see in language on, on the energy surcharge and a way to do, deal with that. I'm less enthusiastic about the property tax surcharge because property taxes for commercial properties and such are based on income, not on the value of your neighbor's property. And so commercial buildings that go up in value go up in value because the assessor has determined that your income's gone up. And that makes a difference in, in your house or my house where changing my assessment by 135% had nothing to do with my income going up, it had to do with what, what changed in the neighborhood around me. So I'm not sure that a property tax surcharge is, is merited. And I'm continuing to pull some numbers in the city and, and looking at some buildings and seeing how the property taxes actually do, do pay off on the different buildings. I think that, you know, we've discussed the consumer price index and it would still be helpful if somebody can come up with a better index than the CPI. I mean, if there is a better index that attracts, that deals with the cost of maintaining rental housing, then that would be a more useful index to use. And I've, I've talked with the county about the index they use, and they use the rents index. But that's only a reflection of what's happening in the rental market. It's not a reflection of what's happening in, in terms of the cost of maintaining the units. So if you have a hyperinflated market, it's simply, it's reflected in the rental index. And that's not a fair measure. That probably overstates the increases in costs for landlords. So I'm not enthusiastic about using the county's model, but I'm open to finding a more accurate index if anybody can help us come up with a more accurate index. I've talked with people in the Army Housing Partnership. They say there are a number of publications that actually have some guidelines for, for operating costs in buildings. And they're going to try to provide me some of that information and maybe, and they update annually. So if it's annual and if it's at all regionally specific, perhaps that might be something worth looking at.
We have, we have done that, excuse me, most of the index like that, the multifamily housing association or something like that, we can pull that up for you. We've got the data from 2000, I think going back as far as 2000. One of the biggest differences with that is that most of the properties that are used to establish those standards, if you will, are for high-rise apartments and may not necessarily be appropriate for the smaller units. But we can pull that, we can get the last year and give you that.
And the, the, whatever report they were referring to, at least they told me about, seemed to have, they seemed indicated had different kinds of buildings represented in there. And so I'll get that and I'll put that on, you know, let everybody see what the information is there. And maybe that will get us out of our chondrom about what's the most appropriate index to use for, for increases. The last thing I'll say is I have serious misgivings about vacancy decontrol because if the purpose of this law is to preserve the number of units in a housing crisis, getting rid of units on vacancy as affordable doesn't, seems to be going in the exact wrong direction and ignoring everything you know about the housing crisis. And the solution like taking them to market and then putting them back on the rent control still ignores the fact that once they've been taken to market, they're not affordable. And you've got to define your market. Is the, is the market the Washington area statistical market that's used, you know, by the feds? That's a very different market than the market that a bank might use in saying what's the, what are the rents in the apartments within a quarter mile of your existing, of your existing apartment. There's one market, which is the submarket that these units exist in, and there's the Washington area statistical market. And the numbers are very, very different. This was a discussion I also had with the county. And the results from those two different markets aren't the same. The HUD numbers don't have any bearing on what things actually cost. The HUD's looking at what, what the market prices are in the region. So anything that gets us the HUD prices of Washington area fair market value is pretty much going to wind up displacing or certainly making it impossible for people to move here who are, you know, would benefit from the existence of affordable housing. So while it might make sense to look at, you know, some ways of changing this, I think using the market as the guide only guarantees that the city loses maybe 15, 20% of its affordable housing every year. And personally, I don't want to be a part of that.
I just wanted to remind everybody that in thinking about the concern that's brought up by the woman at Citizen Comment about the, whether the electrical improvements for the air conditioning were eligible for a capital improvement or not, don't forget that in addition to whether they're eligible, there's also the timeframe under which they need to be applied for. And so it's very possible that in the situation she finds herself, she would not be able to get that improvement, that rent increase in, under our current law because time would have lapsed and she could not apply for it. And so in discussing anything about capital improvements, it's not only items that fall under that, but it's also timeframe under which people need to operate.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd just like to offer a short clarification of my previous request. What I'm looking for is, is ways maybe we could find some win-win solutions. And the example that I gave of, you know, having no cause evictions, that may be a win-win. And I offer this as a hypothetical example to illustrate why, why I'm looking for those other things. But an example might be that we allow vacancy, some form of vacancy decontrol on voluntary vacancy of, of a tenant. So that if the tenant volunteers to leave, that that unit might then qualify for some form of vacancy decontrol. And it's those kind of win-win situations that I thought that first made me realize that we haven't talked about things from a tenant's perspective and what solution, you know, what issues that we might look for solutions from a tenant's perspective.
Short final comment?
Just to Terry's comment. The, the city had proposal for several years in, before MML and in Indianapolis to try to get, change the state's no cause eviction law. And landlords in the state are absolutely adamant about holding on to the right to no cause eviction.
I'm not saying that, that we would do away with no cause evictions. I'm saying that we could tie vacancy decontrol, some form of vacancy decontrol to a voluntary-
Requirement.
Right. That if, that if a tenant leaves an apartment on a voluntary basis, then there may be some form of vacancy decontrol. And that would make it a disincentive for the landlord to do a no cause eviction.
Right. Well, we can-
Sounds like a net loss of units at the end of the day.
We can, we can talk, and we will obviously have to talk about this again. But hopefully there was some, something that gives you all some, some direction. Okay. You said we'd give the city manager five more minutes?
Okay, I'm sorry. This is something that has come up a couple of times and I, I just don't know where it stands right now. I believe that staff has recommended that we make an consistent policy of rent control applying to all rental units, even when an owner just has one rental property?
Yeah, that was one of their recommendations.
What, where, where do we stand on that? Has that already been taken off the table?
We haven't discussed that one yet. And I'm sure we will the next time we deal with it.
Okay, that's sufficient for now.
Barb, did you want to give us your?
Sure, I'll keep it brief. Just a couple of items related to the community center and then a few comments about the upcoming budget process. I did just want to remind the council as well as the community that we will be moving back to the auditorium beginning next week. I did confirm today that the work-
On schedule.
On schedule. The work is proceeding. And they'll probably be doing some cleanup in the auditorium on Friday. So next week, the meeting will be held in the auditorium. Also wanted to let the council know, we did talk to TRG today. They are still moving ahead very well on phase two. We're expecting that they will be, have substantial completion by the date that's set by contract, which is more or less around the middle of May. And they'll be calling for inspections. So at this point, we're not anticipating any issues whatsoever with phase two being done by the end of May.
That's my thought.
And when, when would we be going back to the council chambers?
Oh, you're going back next Monday.
Next Monday.
Right. What'll end up happening is the hallway restrooms, which are being renovated, as the council may recall, for ADA accessibility purposes. That work will still be continuing. The elevator though will be available again to the public. The auditorium will be available for use. And the one restroom that is sort of behind the council chamber, which is not being renovated in any way, is available. But there still will be like the lovely plastic tarp, basically, you know, keeping that hallway sealed off.
And what I read into your statement, first of all, congratulations. Thank you very much for, for this significant improvement in, in working. But I just want to make sure I understand that my celebration on June 3rd in the council auditorium and with refreshments and some other, other part of the community center is in no way going to be jeopardized by anything that might happen.
I'm putting you on the spot here. I, no, I, I don't-
Then we can get something in the Gazette or-
Sure. No, I don't believe there'll be any issue at all. Obviously, what had resulted in the council chamber, the auditorium, as we now call it, not being available was because of the work in the lobby replacing the floor. And that work will essentially be done by the end of this week. So that, that was in addition to the contract. The work on the original part of the contract, which includes the restrooms in the hallway, is still ongoing, which is why I mentioned that would be sealed off. But TRG is expecting to complete all contracted work that is currently in place to the mid, to the end of May. And then basically, barring any additions to their contract, which will be my next item of discussion, they'll be offsite. So I don't anticipate any problems whatsoever, Councilmember Seaman.
Don't jinx anything. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The other item I just wanted to mention, and this is really the one that was probably more time sensitive, and I'm not asking the council to make a decision this evening, but I did want to at least kind of update you. As you are aware, we have been pursuing for some time what it would cost to put an elevator on the Maple Avenue side of the building. This goes back, an issue we've been kind of talking about for a number of months now. As we had talked to the council originally, one of the things we looked at was basically taking the original specifications and the current drawings of the building to show the configuration of the elevator shaft, shared those with TRG Construction, you know, to try to get a sense of the pricing. We had done some just very extremely cursory look as a staff, basically, in terms of what a cab would cost. But there's obviously other aspects of putting an elevator in. When we started that discussion with TRG, if you look at the height, if you will, of the elevator that was called for in this spec, what we found was that ran into some issues in terms of code requirements and essentially a three-foot clearance above and beyond the shaft. What it would have taken to do that would have essentially involved a number of structural modifications to the building that were essentially very cost prohibitive. In light of that, TRG has explored some, some other options, working with the design team and the project management teams. And what I wanted to advise the council this evening, and I just got this this afternoon, so I apologize for no prior notice, we did get a new proposal from TRG late this afternoon, and I'll make a copy and get that out to you. But essentially, what it would entail, and it does meet elevator code requirements, it is, according to the information we've received, would meet all requirements of ADA. But instead of essentially a cab that is eight feet in height, which by code drives that additional three feet of clearance, if you will, it would be a cab that is seven feet, three inches. That could basically be accommodated within the existing building structure and within the elevator shaft as constructed. So that would basically drive the cost down considerably. The pricing that I have to share with you this evening, the only item it does not include, which they're still working on, would be the connection, if you will, between the remote card reader system so that the elevator could essentially be locked off, you know, when we're trying to block off access to the third floor. The price that we received from TRG this afternoon, which I've not had the opportunity to discuss with them, this was faxed over, is $190,000. The price of the cab itself is very much in line with what, you know, staff's research had originally shown. I think I had shared with you a cost of approximately $130,000, knowing that there were some additional items that would be necessary. The additional cost kind of beyond that figure with just the cab, there is obviously a need to have some oversight of, you know, some cutting through the drywall, some other things. But if you don't just hire an elevator company and they just drop it in, there is some project management and oversight that would be required by TRG Construction, some fire alarm work. And obviously, if people don't do this for free, there's some overhead and profit. What I will do tomorrow, or I can just, you know, PDF it and send it out to you all, but would like to share with you this week, just a copy of the proposal we got. Obviously, I'll be having some further discussions with TRG. But since their work is progressing and there is a very long lead time associated with ordering a cab, what I would like to have is some time on the agenda next week where the council would basically be able to look at this and perhaps we could make a decision because we will need to be giving TRG some direction, whether we wish to accept this proposal or not.
I would find it helpful when we get to that discussion to understand what are the downsides of a nine-inch shrinkage in the height of the elevator. You know, is there, you know, capacity for moving? You know, obviously, some of our residents, four residents, exceed seven foot, three inch. But, you know, what are the downsides? You have, you know, moving equipment, does our elevator, what's the height of our other elevator? You know, those kind of things. Those questions will come up next week.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer those. I was, I'm actually out with a tape measure, measuring our existing elevator. And I believe that cab appears to be eight feet, which was kind of, I would say it's not non-standard, but, you know, what appears to be what we were originally exploring. I know Vanita George, our project manager, had some discussions, I think, with TRG directly. I didn't have the opportunity to do that. And I think your point, Councilmember Seaman, in terms of what might you not be able to move on the elevator?
Right.
And we'll have that information for you next week. I'll probably actually get it out to you this week so you have an opportunity to think about it.
And I assume this is code compliant?
Yes, it is. We actually have it in writing. But just one thing that we were concerned about is to make sure, you know, it would comply with any applicable elevator codes and would need any ADA requirements. And at least the information we've received indicates that it is. That's a commitment they are making. The only last item, this is for the benefit of the public who may be watching this meeting during the coming week, is just a reminder that at next week's meeting, there will be two public hearings. One will be on the proposed budget for FY07 and the other will be the required constant yield tax rate hearing because the proposed tax rate at this time- yield tax rate hearing because the proposed tax rate at this time is above that rate. Also wanted just to mention and follow up on an email I had sent the council approximately a week or so ago about two matters relating to the FY07 budget, primarily for the benefit of anyone who might be watching more than the council. As I had mentioned in the email I had sent to you, based on some information from our broker, my proposed budget did assume a 10% increase in employee health insurance rates. We have since received the actual rates from the carrier. There was a meeting last week with staff, Mr. Howe specifically, the broker as well as the carrier, to try to talk about that rate because the initial rate adjustment that the city received was 21%. Through those discussions, I think it's 15% and some change, but basically, the fiscal impact of that is about $60,000 on the FY07 budget. Our dental rates actually came in slightly less than what we projected, otherwise that $60,000 would actually be higher. What I will be doing is if the council is amenable to this, is rather than sitting here and marking up each individual departmental budget, we can go through and sort of update the summary sheet before you start your budget deliberations, so at least you see the impact of what the council's concurrents, since I know there might be some other changes as we work through it, we won't go through and change each individual departmental sheet. But I would like to kind of show you how that impacts the bottom line, so you have that information as you move forward. Just the other item primarily, since we are having a public hearing coming up, last year, there was a lot of discussion by the council about the tool library. You had a work session with the friends at the tool library, and unfortunately, we were not successful in having them come back to meet with you prior to the start of the budget deliberations. But the concerns that were expressed last year was how do we increase usage, what steps were going to be taken, and a lot of that discussion. In talking to the public works director and looking at some of the data, it does appear that utilization continues to be relatively low, and when you take the cost of staffing the tool library compared to the number of tools being taken out, it results in a very high figure. I did share this with the council, but once again, this is primarily for the benefit of the community, just to be clear that my proposed budget basically has funding in place for the tool library for the first six months of the year. The fiscal impact if the council, you know, chooses to fund it for the full year would never really not be that material to the overall budget, but I did want to go ahead and just share that, so if there's anyone in the community who has a particular interest in the tool library, that they would know that's what's in the budget as it stands, and basically, they should come, you know, address the council next week or actually continue your deliberations. That's it.
And I think for the benefit of the council and the public, to remind you that we actually have two meetings next week. We have our regular meeting on Monday evening, and we have a budget work session on Thursday evening. And we, for the next two, three, whatever number of weeks, we do have Thursday budget work sessions also. We can take fewer of them. If we get to the budget faster, if we get to the budget slower, we'll have more of them.
Yeah, and I would just encourage the council once again that if there are particular issues related to a particular departmental budget or anything that you would like staff to research, the sooner you can let me know about that, you know, we can have that information together. I see Councilmember Elwes raising his eyebrows. We have sent a number of requests to the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. We're trying a new avenue because the person that I had has failed to respond to multiple emails. Ms. Brooks is now using some of her contacts, and we are hopeful we will have some information for you.
Some issues relative to the police department were actually put on the table today. Those should be covered.
Okay, that's the last one.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.